Public Financing Authority, City Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Twining.
Here.
Councilman Kennedy.
Here.
Mayor Protem McKeon.
Here.
Mayor Burns.
Here.
Councilwoman Vandermark.
Here.
Councilman Gruhl.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
All present.
Alright, tonight's invocation will be given by Huntington Beach Police Chaplain Bob Ewing.
Would you bow with me? Let's take a moment to pause and reflect. Heavenly Father, we come before you with gratitude for this opportunity to gather in service to the people of Huntington Beach. We thank you for the dedication and leadership of our city council members, for the tireless efforts of our city staff who work daily to keep our community strong, safe, and thriving. We ask your special protection and guidance for our police officers and firefighters, those who stand ready at all hours to protect life and property, watch over them and their families, and grant them wisdom, strength, and safety in all they do. Father, as our city approaches this important election, we pray for a spirit of peace and mutual respect. In times of passionate debate and differing opinions, may we speak, may we seek understanding over division, dialogue over conflict, and unity over discord. I ask that no matter the results of the election, that all would treat each other with kindness and respect, thus honoring the results of this election. Blessed is meeting, guide every decision made here tonight, and may all who serve do so with integrity, compassion, and a deep love for this community we call home. In your most holy name, Lord Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Yeah, sir, can you have it make sure the people in the hallway stay a little quiet? If you can, please. Tonight's pledge allegiance is going to be led by Butch Twining. Please place your hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city attorney, do you have anything to report from closed session?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Council members, would anyone like to make a comment? I just want to say the Kalabunga Van Clan met at the pier this week. That was a great event. I was pretty stoked to see how many people showed up. It was a very good event for Huntington Beach. That was awesome. Anybody else? Okay. Supplemental communications? Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, we have supplemental communication. On the consent calendar, number eight, one email received. Number 11, one email received. Number 19, one email received. Under council member items, number 24, one email received. Number 26, eight emails received. Number 27, one email received. And new item number 25-463, one email received.
Alright, thank you. Funny question, but do we have anybody? City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we have 75 speakers.
Alright. Alright. Listen, please, proper decorum at city council meetings is imperative in order for the public to remain informed about issues pertaining to the city's business. The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to be heard and address those issues in a public forum. Disruptive behavior impeding or delaying our ability to conduct the city council's business will not be tolerated. Penal Code Section 403 prohibits disrupting. This meeting and enforcement action will be taken for violations of this law. At this time, the city council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment on items may do so in person by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged, but not required, to identify themselves by name. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item may, not on the agenda, may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting city council's administrative assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire city council at city.council@surfcity-hb.org. I'm going to read the addend, the admonition. "Thank you all for coming tonight. Over the last few months of the city council meetings, behavior by members of the public has become unruly and has created disturbance. It got so bad at one meeting that we had to recess and ask the public to leave. Please remember, these meetings are for city council to conduct public business that is on the agenda. As I have unfortunately had to continue to do, I am advising the public that behavior that actually disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders infeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting will not be tolerated. Please also beware that California Penal Code provides that every person who, without authority or law, willfully disturbs or breaks up the meeting may be guilty of a misdemeanor. If you want to be heard, please come to the podium for public speaking during public comments, or fill out a blue request to arrange a meeting with staff or council members, or both. Please, I am requesting, try to be respectful and professional and not use the podium as a soapbox to bully or insult others. Also, speak directly to the councils. Specifically, do not speak to the audience." If you would like to speak to individual council members, please request a blue card and we will set up a meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. It'll be greatly appreciated. City Clerk, please call the first 20 speakers.
C. Smith, and please exit the back of the library, make a left, and line up down the hallway. The officers in the back will assist you. C. Smith. Alicia Stevens. Mr. Amory Hanson. Barbara Snyder. Mitchell Reinersen. Barbara Richardson. Mabel M. Paula Schaefer. Pat Goodman. TJ England. William Yarchin. Kristin P. David Pripe. Ann Palmer. Nora Pedersen. Roy McCord. Harold Das. Don McGee. Charlie Jackson.
Okay, Madam Clerk, each person will be given a time of one minute to speak. Well, we're giving you one. Sir, please begin.
Hi, Mitchell Reinersen again. Since my granddaughter isn't watching, let's talk about porn signs, and why this city council has left them up for over six weeks. There are 18 of them at Beach and Yorktown alone. I call it the porn sign Alamo. It started as a bad idea and became a worse decision when you chose to expose more children to pornographic language on signs than they'd ever see in a library. Why? Because money was spent? Is this what privatization would bring? Money over morality? How can you claim to protect children from obscene material when you won't even remove porn signs with a councilman's name on them? Is this your political legacy? You want voters to remember the porn sign Alamo, the one you defended? It's just a sign. Do the right thing. Take it down, or let every voter drive by porn signs on election day and decide what this council represents. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
This gift is a Freedom Bell, in honor of the 50th anniversary of our Central Library, and in honor of all of our public libraries in Huntington Beach. And with it comes all that it implies and symbolizes. The original Freedom Bell gifted by Americans to the United States has rung daily at noon since its installation in 1950. The Freedom Bell serves as a beacon of hope. And it bears the inscription, "That this world, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom." Abraham Lincoln, Gettysburg Address. So tonight, with all of you, I celebrate over a century of freedom to read in Huntington Beach with this new Freedom Bell as a gift. Let freedom ring and vote yes on A and B.
Next speaker, please.
We've all known the quiet comfort of sinking into the imaginary world of a good book. Jarring passages have been read here that have been blatantly lied about as being in the children's section. Listening to people address this room with sexual passages while children are present really says more about the speakers than it does the content of the book. The books they are reading are not from the children's section. The protect the children people clearly don't care that there are children in the room, and there are children in the room tonight. Reading graphic passages aloud is really creepy, especially when the readers appear to be enjoying it so much. Please pursue your sexual fantasies in the privacy of your home. Vote yes on A and B.
Next speaker, please.
Do I stop? Hi. One of my favorite things to do is go to the library with my family and look up books that interest me. It would, it may not, it may not be interesting to everyone, but it's interesting to me. If you really want to protect me, keep cyber bullies and creepy videos from popping up on my screen. If you really want to protect me, help stop school shootings. Also, our librarians are really nice and help us find the book we want. We don't want them to lose their job. If you really want to protect me, please stop posting inappropriate signs by schools. I've never seen any inappropriate books in the library. You do not need to protect me from books. Vote yes on Measure A and B. Thank you, good night.
Next speaker, please. You guys, please, please minimize the clapping. Let the, let progress go.
Pat. Pat, they say third time's a charm, so please do not take away my right to speak freely and address you by name. Don, your homophobic Facebook post claiming books turn kids gay and comparing them to harmful things like DDT, cigarettes, and lead paint is not just wrong, it's deeply misleading. Using health hazards to justify bigotry is dishonest and dangerous. Studies show inclusive books help build empathy, not cause harm. More kids are coming out these days, it's because they finally feel safe to be themselves. Your rhetoric feels fear, division, and harm, especially to our youth, who face higher risks of violence and suicide when stigmatized. Don, imagine being a gay kid, feeling isolated, and finding a book that says you're not alone and that your life matters. As leaders, you should uplift and unite, not hurt and harm. Meet with the gay community, listen and learn. Lead with love, not hate. I'm happy to help you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, city council. My name is Mabel, and I am a 4th grade at Peterson Elementary. Free people read freely. Do not let an adult committee ban books and try to prevent me from reading something. I am smart, I am resourceful, and I will find it if I want it. Trust with the professionals and leave the library and librarians alone. Remember, it's our future, not yours.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As a 15-year taxpaying resident of Huntington Beach, I want to confirm my support for Measure A and Measure B. Throughout my life, my family taught me that books are our friends, and libraries are a safe place to learn and explore topics because librarians for decades have ensured safe places for us all to learn. Trained librarians keep our library safe, just like our trained lifeguards keep us all safe in the ocean. So yes, librarians are trusted lifeguards to ensure kids can safely swim through a sea of books. Support Measure A, support librarians, families, and our community. And remember, this library is a jewel throughout this community, just like our beloved pier. Support Measure B, put an end to city actions to privatize our library. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Measures A and B were put on the ballot by partisan leftists who deceive the community regarding the negative ramifications of their measures. Opponents of A and B, proponents of A and B want you to vote no, I mean, I'm sorry. Opponents of A and B want you to vote no regarding both of these partisan measures. Voting no on Measure A protects the authority of the democratically-elected city council to give input regarding concerns the community has about placement of sexually explicit and deviant books into the children's and teen sections of the library without parental notification. Voting no on Measure B protects the democratically-elected city council's fiscal responsibility over the library, like it has over all other city-funded services. It is not a corporate takeover of the library, that's a straw man, straw man argument. The purposeful deception and attempts to circumvent the democratic process of the elected city council with these measures must be rejected through no votes on both Measures A and B.
Thank you. Ma'am, ma'am in about the sixth row, can you please take down that sign? Thank you. Next speaker, please.
This is why residents should vote yes on Measures A and B. City council says they are not banning books. They are, however, restricting access to certain books. Their 21-member review committee would be able to reject books the librarians want to order. This committee would be able to relocate any book already owned by the library that they find objectionable. PEN America says that restricting access to books is a form of book banning. City council says that they are not selling the library building. Privatization has nothing to do with selling the library. It has everything to do with outsourcing library management, staffing, programming, and the ordering of books. This council would be able to tell this agency what type of programs and books they want made available to the public. Do we really want to give city council this much power? Fight against government overreach. Protect our library. Vote yes on A and B. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
TJ England, 59-year resident of this city. I cannot believe what this city situation has come to since you seven have been elected. I want to please encourage everyone here listening to vote yes for Measures A and B. This proposed ordinance 25454, affirming the library will not be sold and that books will not be banned, it's meaningless drivel the way it's worded. I voted already. We're having an election that's costing a million dollars. What is this? What is this nonsense you're talking about? You changing, taking my vote away? I don't understand it. I really don't. What is this 25454? You had your chance to vote on this before this whole thing started.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Paula Schaefer. An unqualified committee of city residents who select the children's books is a dangerous idea because of the potential unintended consequences. How will this committee be trained? If it's not trained, the potential for censorship is significant. The committee has an overly broad scope with final authority. It could ban material on the Holocaust, on civil rights for minorities, or equal rights for women. It could lead to censorship of adult material regarding LGBTQ issues as well. The no supporters say it's only about protecting children, but it is not. The no supporters advocate at religious services and electioneer at the city council agenda. The campaign is about controlling librarians. This campaign is about limiting our ability to read freely in our public library. This campaign is about power. Use your power. Vote yes on A and B.
Next speaker, please.
Stop government overreach in Huntington Beach by voting yes on A and B. Keep politicians, corporations, and politically motivated churches out of the public library. How can we entrust this council with our library when they lost nine librarians in just two years, voted for the MAGA library plaque, considered outsourcing to a former mayor's for-profit company, and now they want to give their political and church friends the power to determine what books our library keeps? This election isn't just about the books, it's about government overreach. Don't let this council and their political operatives take over our library. Vote yes to ensure it remains the people's library, not their library. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
This month is a very special month, I think we all know, so I want to bid you all a very happy National Veterans and Military Families Month. And as such, I want to thank Butch Twining and Chad Williams, the two veterans on the city council, for standing once again in the breach between those who would distort our children's minds, those deviants, and the children themselves. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Vote no on A and B. I also want to thank Gracie Van der Mark and Pat Burns for the resolution that opposes AB 84. Let's keep our charter schools and let's keep them funded. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Sorry, I'm a little short. Okay. My name is Allison Stevens, and I'm a resident of Huntington Beach. Thank you so much for your leadership and for standing against AB 84. This bill was shut down almost every independent study school in California. This is not a minor change, it's a loss of educational access for an estimated 700,000 or more students across California. Charter schools don't compete with traditional schools, they complete the system. They offer a lifeline for students who need something different, kids with disabilities, medical conditions, anxiety, autism, ADHD, kids who have been bullied, faced trauma, housing instabilities, or kids who just learned best outside of a crowded classroom setting. My own children are thriving today because of the flexibility and support they received through a charter school. It gave them a real chance at success, and we're not alone. I truly believe, deep down, we all want the same thing, an education system that lifts up every child, embraces how they learn the best, and gives each child a chance to shine. Let's fix what's broken, not eliminate what works.
Next. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Alicia Stevens. Thank you for supporting charter schools and opposing AB 84. Your support means so much to us. By opposing AB 84, you're protecting some of the most vulnerable students, those with disabilities and those who have been bullied. I was one of those students. I had to leave public school because I was being bullied and because of my disabilities, it made it hard for me to thrive in the public school classroom. I'm truly grateful I had the option to attend a charter school. Charter schools made a huge difference for me. They gave me the support I needed and a chance to be successful. Students with disabilities deserve options. Some students do well in public schools, but others need a more personalized approach. Removing charter schools takes away a child's chance to succeed. We need to protect our children by opposing AB 84. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight in support of IM 28, the mayor and councilwoman Van der Mark's IM to oppose AB 84. AB 84 will limit the ability of experts to provide homeschool children with unique experiences. I have attended council meetings for over 10 years. I understand the value of getting in the trenches and the importance of passing on that unique knowledge to future generations. To show further support for AB 84, the mayor might consider attending a charter school or homeschool saying and providing his own unique knowledge to students. I truly believe in educational opportunities for all Huntingtonians. Once again, I urge a yes vote on IM 28. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Voting yes on Measures A and B equals freedom to read in our public library. It would repeal the ordinance you adopted to censor and ban books, as Item G states that all decisions by the review board are final and non-appellable. This city council would indirectly ban books through this committee of handpicked friends. Voting yes allows the Huntington Beach residents a chance to vote, should you once again contemplate the privatizing the library, or, God forbid, selling it, the residents want to say in the future of our library. Did you have fun at your porn fest at Tony Strickland's house or at Lake Park the other day? You all have done more damage with your lies than any puberty or LGBT-friendly book could ever do. Have the OC District Attorney, or the FBI, or our police chief arrested anyone yet for said obscene books? We all know they were alerted to investigate this rumor. Vote yes on Measures A and B by June 10th to protect our freedoms.
Next speaker, please.
My name's Bill Yarkin. Today, the city council is going to pass a resolution declaring that the city library will not be sold and books will not be banned. Same council opposes Measures A and B, which will also make sure that the library will not be sold and books will not be banned. So why would the council oppose what they say they support? A and B will take these protections, which we all agree are important, and inscribe them into the city code as ordinances. Now, that truly protects the city's library by keeping its fate out of the hands of the city council and in the hands of the people. On the other hand, the council's resolution is weak and toothless. It doesn't protect anything because it's subject to the whims of this or that city council who can overturn it with a simple vote. So here's the difference. Who does a library belong to? If you think the library belongs to them as a platform for their political agenda, you should vote no. You should vote yes if you think the library belongs to you, the people who pay for it and use it. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi. I didn't bring any bells or whistles, but I want to support Agenda Item Number 10, 25-388. Every organization needs to clarify signatory authorization, always. And Item Number 26, it should not have been necessary to issue a resolution to confirm the library was never going to be sold and books were not being banned. But thanks for clarifying, and I support your resolution. Here's a story I got from a woman today. She went to a yes-on-measure-A-and-B party because she was confused, and because she was invited, and they had wine and food, and a certain school board member who was going to tell her everything she needed to know. What she heard was terrible claims about our council, terrible claims about individuals, the hard drive that Chad Williams has porn on, and porn in a garage for a gathering in Huntington Beach. And you know what? Do you know what that porn was? Those were our library books.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Bethany Webb, you're being warned, you're disrupting, okay? Please keep it down. Yes, your name's that. Please be, you're being disruptive, and now you've been warned. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Ma'am, sir, go ahead and speak.
Hi, I want to thank the city council for taking a stand against AB 942. Here's the full title of the bill. AB 942: Net Energy Metering Eligible Customer Generators Tariffs. The draft letter addresses the net energy metering issues. I especially like another reason the council gave and agree with. Homeowners and investors rely on consistent regulations to make informed decisions about renewable energy investments. Abrupt changes can undermine public trust and hinder the state's progress toward its environmental goals. I think these are fine words, and I am glad the city council advocates the city across all city endeavors. And so much for the NEM tariffs. I think we all oppose taco tariffs.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Taryn Palumbo, and I have the privilege of previously serving as a commissioner for the Community and Library Services Commission. As a parent of young children, I'm strongly opposed to the idea of pornographic material in the children's library, which is why I am so glad that there isn't any. Our trained and expert professional librarians are being falsely accused of things like being pedophiles and groomers, words that should never be used to describe the wonderful work of our librarians. If there were actually pornography in the library, the city council would be obligated to file an investigation. The truth, however, is that there is not. Instead, this is a manufactured moral panic, being used to give control to unelected, unqualified individuals who can and will apply their personal points of view to what Huntington Beach residents can or cannot read. This is not about pornography. It is about allowing a political ideology to be used to censor different points of view. Happy Pride.
Next speaker, please.
We can all agree that pornography is bad for children. Then why did Chad put up signs all over the city with the word porn on it? Kids Googled the word, cookies were placed in their browsers, and third-party sites were used to send them ads and videos about porn. Did Chad get a vicarious thrill from that? Just like he appeared to do on his latest Instagram feed where he read a passage about incest with such obvious enthusiasm. That sounds like something a groomer would do. Do we want to appoint him head of the HB Morality Police? Chad, as a veteran, I'm sure you have good health insurance. Perhaps it's time to work out your sexual crisis with a private therapist instead of subjecting the entire city to your struggles. Vote yes on A and B.
Next speaker, please.
Just up from here in the children's library, there's a sign, "Please don't leave children unattended." It's been there as long as I can remember. That means manage your own child's reading. Some people believe there's porn in the library. I understand. Council people have put signs all over town, porn, porn, porn. If you believe there's porn in the library, then the sign up there is really important to you, like danger, high voltage, don't touch the red wire. Read the sign. Please don't leave children unattended. Manage your own child's reading, not my kid, yours. But that's not enough. City council dumped a 21-person committee on us, big government telling us how to raise our children. Nanny state. And now, a $1.2 million election, your election, not ours. You raised it. I've offered council a sensible solution. Print more signs. I got $100. Call me up, I'll give you the $100. Just don't say please this time. Okay, it's too late, the election's here. Vote yes on A and B.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm asking the council to table Item Number 26, the so-called affirmation of public library services. This resolution seems designed to confuse voters. I am, and I voted. Have you changed your positions from no to yes on Measures A and B? No one has said the library is for sale, and while the council claims they won't ban books, they already have, by restricting access to certain titles. Is this just a last-minute push to influence the vote on Measures A and B? If so, why didn't the council adopt the petitions instead of calling for a costly special election? This election is about control. Should librarians, parents, and readers guide our library's future, or will decisions be handed over to a shifting, politically-appointed board and a for-profit company? Voters will decide by June 10th.
Thank you, ma'am. Next 20 speakers, please.
Jenna Cohen, Ella Cohen, Brandy DeSao, Megan C., Leanne S., Brett Bush, Rick Brown, Mary Jo Barbacheck, Fran Swolengard, Michelle Ferry, Donald Eugene, Mary Kyle, Sean Roslands, Brenda, Pamela McBeal, Matt, Kane Durham, B. Channel, League of Women Voters, Orange Coast, Mel Rashke. Please approach the podium.
Speaker, go ahead, please. Oh, hold on. Let him set the timer.
Hi, City Council. My name is Brandy DeSao, and I'm just here to speak again about A and B, and I just feel like this is a real attack on the family unit. Unfortunately, I feel like the family's been under attack for decades. The family's so important to keep our society going. And to get kids involved in porn and gender confusion at such a young age where they could possibly never even have kids, or just get addicted to porn, it's just a mess. It's just a mess to have that kind of stuff in the library. It's so important to keep the family strong. It's good for, I'm just really glad you guys all have families too, the family units. It's really important for society. So I just really hope and pray that more people vote no and that this does not pass because we need to protect our society as a whole, protect children, and come together, not separate. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
May I start?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. My name's Michelle Ferry. I've lived here since birth, 1968. I am very grateful when my mom took me to the grand opening of the Central Library 50 years ago. I am also grateful for my mom, now 86, to be able to vote yes on Measure A and B. I am grateful to my son, who also grew up at this library and was also able to vote for Measure A and B. Now, most of the funding from Measure A and B is not about protecting the innocence of children, it is about asserting control, transforming a public institution to a private one. They are not there to get rid of the library buildings per se, but to get rid of our librarians. They're not there to peddle porn. If your kids are so scared of porn, maybe keep it off of their signs. Please, please vote yes on Measure A and B. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Leanne Steinkirschner, 35-year tax-paying and library-attending resident. Private equity takeovers often claim to save money and improve efficiency. But here's how my day went yesterday. Went to buy a birthday present for my granddaughter at Toys R Us. Oops, no longer there. Acquired by private equity. Went over to see if I could do it at Kmart or Sears, but they're a shell of a store after they were acquired by private equity. So I thought, you know what? I'll go get some beach sandals for summer. Tried to go to Payless Shoe Store, guess what? Same story. Well, at least I can go get some birthday party goods at the 99-cent store. Oh, here we go again. That's gone as well. That's gone as well. All this running around made me hungry. I'll meet a friend at Red Lobster, see if she has any ideas where to shop. You guessed it, that's gone too. Let my beautiful library be acquired by a private equity firm? No way, not if I have any say. Vote yes on measure B requires a citywide vote to change our library.
Next speaker, please.
Megan Chickrell, Happy Pride Month. The year's 23rd. You drive up to the library, you pay $15 to park, $11 for a slightly overdue book, then realize you can't check out Of Mice and Men or The Diary of Anne Frank for your high school or because they were permanently banned by our city council morality police. Another 30 bucks to order from Amazon. So grab my toddler and take her to Story Hour, but we're greeted by a permanently closed sign. Exasperated, we try to get a how-to book, but then The Old Fashioned Lady and the Tramp has been banned. They realize that lady was naked and they thought the tramp was a hooker. Prefer your library the way it is. Vote yes on A and B.
Next speaker, please.
Red Bush, Huntington Beach, no on measure A and B. April 2, 2024, Carol Dallas, Friends of the Library, said, "Don't sell off Huntington Beach Library." She said this because she's actually being a hypocrite, saying that she didn't say it, and then she did say it. She said it so people would vote yes. So as you sit out there and be hypocrites all day on us, let's understand where this word pornography comes from. The original word in the Greek is pornia. Another ancient word would be fornication. A modern word would be sexual immorality. So all of you naysayers out there, wherever you're at in your heads, you're not protecting children. You're protecting whatever vitriol, whatever grooming standard that you have, and you stuff it. You stuff the truth with absolute horrendous lies. You will be judged for these things. I'm not doing it because I'm no better than you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, city council. I fully support resolution number 202545 affirming our public library will not be sold and the books will not be banned. Let's shut down the dishonest narrative being pushed by radical Democrat activists in our city. They lied to create fear and confusion. Enough is enough. Now we face a defining choice in Huntington Beach. Will we protect our children and our community by voting no on A and B? Or will we hand over our values to the agenda that's already destroying the moral fabric of cities across this country? Let's be honest, this is the same political movement that puts men in women's restrooms, boys and girls' sports teams, and pornographic material in children's sections of libraries. They call it progress. We call it what it is, indoctrination. We must draw the line, vote no on A and B, and defend our families and defend our children. And let's remember Luke 17:2, "It would be better for him if a millstone was hung around his neck and he be thrown into the sea than cause one of these little ones to be harmed." Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, friends. My name is Sean. I'm here to raise my concern about the long-term stability of our city's finances. Right now, Huntington Beach is staring down a budget built on short-term austerity. We're cutting staff and raiding our pension trusts, not because we have to, but because we're unwilling to admit that we have a structural revenue problem. Every dollar that we put towards our pension liabilities today is $2 saved in future obligations. This is the time to act strategically by modernizing our business licensing and transitioning from a flat fee to a gross receipts and CPI-based system. This would generate a conservatively estimated $1 to $3 million annually to be used to pay down our unfunded accrued liabilities, ensuring that businesses that profit most from our city's infrastructure contribute proportionally to maintaining it. Let's act like a city planning for the next generation, not just the next election. Yes on A and B. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
For the last 42 years that I've lived in Huntington Beach, I've always been very, very proud of our Huntington Beach libraries. The librarians and their volunteer staff have worked hard in each of the libraries to monitor and organize the books that come into the libraries and place them in the appropriate locations. Parents accompanying their young children and monitor the books that they feel are okay for their children to read. We actually have a sign in the lobby that says that children 11 years of age and under must be accompanied by their parents. I feel very comfortable with the parent oversight. Please keep the library system as it is, and I recommend to the public to vote yes on measures A and B on June 10. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jignish Patiar. It's been said a couple times tonight already that there is no way to appeal these books being moved, not banned, but if you vote for your city council member who then places the parents on the board, you are in fact replacing what books you can. You can actually vote your way there rather than letting one single librarian decide it. You have this affinity for trusting experts. I'm sure plenty of you trusted to get that experimental vaccine in your arm, but we'll see how well that turns out for a lot of you. But in the end, this is all about protecting the innocence of children. We are getting into a time where there is more depression, there is more child suicide, and it's an ideology causing these children to think they're in a different sex. Everyone's born in the perfect body, and that's the message we need to be sending. Protect the innocent, vote no on A and B.
Next speaker, please.
I'm here to acknowledge LGBTQ Pride Month this month. The city's ordinance to ban the gay pride flag on city property is disgusting. Unanimous vote is required to overturn, not even a simple majority. Shame on you. What are you afraid of? Many other Orange County cities are celebrating while HB is not. Stop homophobic and bigoted actions by the city. 9% of Americans are LGBTQ compared to 6% military veterans in active duty. Yet the city of Huntington Beach, Facebook acknowledges Military Appreciation Month last month, no mention of Gay Pride Month now. We are part of this city, like it or not. Your position is to represent all of us, not just the mean-spirited MAGA people who belong to your church. You are no better than any of us. We are loud and proud, and we are not going anywhere. Deal with it.
For those of us who like to sew and do crafts, you're out of luck when it comes to getting supplies locally. What used to be a quick trip to one or two stores in HB now has turned into a search mission. I'm talking about Jo-Ann Fabrics, if you haven't guessed. What do Jo-Ann Fabrics, Big Lots, and Party City, and Red Lobster all have in common? How about acquisition by a private equity firm? Last spring, a bid was made for a private equity firm to take over operation of our public libraries. Private equity firms prioritize financial returns, which shift focus from community service to cost-cutting. Right now, you can still get your crafting fix at Makerspace in the library, but that could soon be lost. Measure B would require that before the library could be acquired by private equity, it must be put to a citywide vote. Vote yes on measures A and B, and happy pride.
Next speaker, please.
In 1989, my daughter and I moved here with nothing more than what we could pack into my car. The library was a place for me to study as I finished my degree and my daughter to discover books. As life moved on with graduations, marriages, and grandchildren, the library has always been there. I took the grandchildren to Storytime. My writing partner and I wrote two screenplays using the soundproof rooms. I acted in the theater here in this local room. My husband and 10-year-old grandson used the Makerspace to print a 3D replacement part for my 16-year-old car, and there is so much more. Privatization would be a for-money business that would take away so much. Please give voters the right to keep their library as a free service to the community. Vote yes on A and B.
Next speaker, please.
For several election cycles, Huntington Beach has been plastered with large political signs by both sides of the political spectrum. It's a political sign war that is aimed at our low-information voters, but quite frankly, thousands of residents are over it, especially the signs for the June 10 special election that included the word porn. Those signs expose more young children to porn than any book they might randomly find in our public library that they find objectable. We need a new political sign policy. It's time to limit political signs, both in size and where they can display. Other cities managed to have successful elections without the sign blight that overtakes Huntington Beach for several weeks for each election. Your vote should not be based on a political sign. Read the ballot, read the arguments, make an informed decision, and make an informed vote. I did, and I've already voted yes and yes.
Next speaker.
You will hear people say it's just about moving books to the appropriate section. That sounds reasonable, but the problem is it's not true. There are no books to be moved because there is no pornography in the children's section. However, there are future books to be selected or banned to another part of the library or removed altogether. Book bans are a direct threat to our freedoms. The anti-library extremists are fear-mongering with sex. Will you pay attention when they ban a book about your religion or your heritage? When books are removed from shelves because they challenge us, make us uncomfortable, or reflect diverse experiences, we are not protecting our communities, we are weakening them. Censorship doesn't safeguard children. It denies them the opportunity to think critically and understand the world around them. Don't fear diversity, fear authoritarianism. Vote yes on A and B.
Next speaker.
My name is Malvina Rashke. I'm a retired librarian from an adjacent district, and I was there for 37 years. I'm here to speak about measure B. Measure B is about privatization only, not which books are in the library. Last spring, there was a proposal by a private equity firm, LSNS, to privatize the library. It was withdrawn. However, it's still possible to privatize the library without consent or input from the public, as it would take one city council meeting to propose and the next meeting to approve, and only a four-person majority is necessary. Measure B requires that if privatization is proposed, it must be put to a citywide vote to approve. What is more fair than allowing people to vote? Our city library, our crown jewel, belongs to all citizens, not just our city council. Don't let them take your voice away. I encourage a yes vote on measure B. Preserve your beloved library as it is. Thank you.
Next speaker.
The League of Women Voters urges the public to vote yes on ballot measures A and B. The League is a national organization which has promoted voting rights and services that support an informed electorate for 105 years. In accord with its mission, the League supports the maintenance of a free, professionally-managed public library. The attempt to restrict and control the public's access to library materials and the false demonization of professional librarians does not address any real problems existing in the library. There has never been one verified incident of any Huntington Beach library employee forcibly exposing any library patron of any age to any material, let alone grooming children for pedophilia. A strong public library run by educated librarians is essential to a well-informed, educated community. Vote yes on measures A and B.
Hello, my name is Stacy Mignano, and I am a 20-year resident of Huntington Beach with three school-aged children in Huntington Beach schools. I just wanted to express my disappointment with the city council's action regarding this special election. Regardless of the outcome of next week's election, we have all already lost. This council has chosen to sow division in the city and misappropriate $1 million of our limited funds in order to prove that they know better than countless parents and trained librarians. For what? Children are not experiencing trauma in the library. They are not going there to seek out porn, even if it was among the shelves at the children's library, which it's not. They can much more easily do that on the devices that they use every day, the phones that they carry around, and the tablets that they are using endlessly, much to my dismay. Kids, teens, and adults are using the library to better themselves, enjoy reading, and to learn and grow. We have a wonderful library that my family uses regularly. Please leave it as a benefit to all our residents, not just those with whom you agree. Please turn your attention and our resources to making...
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Let me be clear. I don't want porn in our library. I don't believe there is porn in our library. I don't believe children are searching for porn in our library until our city council exposes them to the idea. I do want to protect our children from tyranny and oppression. I do want to protect our children, have them learn from our past mistakes so they don't repeat them. I do believe our current city council with their MAGA agenda are trying to abolish the Constitution and destroy our freedoms by stifling our knowledge and blinding us to the consequences of their actions. Vote yes on A and B to protect our future. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Kaneen Durham, taxpaying resident, representing Pride at the Pier. This council has chosen not to respect Pride Month, so I figured I would do that for you. Pride Month commemorates the LGBTQ civil rights movement and honors our contributions to society long before the first brick was thrown at Stonewall. With over 850 pieces of anti-LGBTQ legislation introduced in the U.S. so far this year, it remains deeply necessary. We are your neighbors. We are your city staff, your police officers, your baristas, your lifeguards, your doctors, your veterans, your gardeners, your family. Your derogatory statements towards my community will not make us disappear. We've always been here. We've always been queer. You're just going to have to get used to it. Happy Pride.
Good evening. If you read Sections 2.66030 and 2.66110, Section A of our municipal code, you'll find that the language therein doesn't limit the scope of the board's reviewing power to children's books with sexual content. Hence, if the board decides that the experiences of queer and BIPOC people don't meet their community standards, then they could ban the books and material that explore such topics forever as the board's decisions are final and non-appellable. This is ridiculous. Libraries are a place for people of all identities to explore their identities, and librarians' jobs are to do that, not politically-appointed board members. Vote yes on A and B to remove Chapter 2.66.
Next speaker.
Welcome to Storytime. There once was a beautiful town where everyone was happy. The people loved to gather at the Book Palace, where they could read, go to Storytime, make crafts, and get help from the sweet librarians who knew everyone by name. One dark day, the circus of seven snakes invaded the town, wanting to take place their circus tent where the Book Palace was, so they could sell tickets to their clown show of horror. The seven snakes slithered into the Book Palace and accused the sweet librarians of wanting to hurt children. The evil snakes lured the people to the torture chamber, where they hypnotized them with venom and lies, and the librarians cried. Then the scary clowns showed up with big bags of cash and big... Then the scary clowns showed up with big bags of cash and big signs, hoping to convince the townspeople that the librarians were evil. But Cindy Lou, through the crowd, cried, "Stop! That's our Book Palace, snakes! Take your clown car and your circus tent!"
Next speaker. City clerk, call the next 20, please.
Mark Tonkovich. Amber Ying. Bethany Webb. Mary Ann Cylinder. Guest P. Kathy Kerik. Russ Neal. Dan Jamison. Dave Reinerson. Jeannie Wiggit. Diane Bentley. Jocelyn Rabbitshire. Larry Hirsch. Chris Reenie. Carrie Mann. Tim Geddis. Kathy Haas. Brian Thienis.
Hi, my name is Amber Ying. I'm a 29-year resident of Huntington Beach. I raised two children here, both to adulthood. We use the library. And I've been talking with people lately online about the public library and what they've been hearing, and the one thing that I find absent is any children that have found any inappropriate material in the library. Every single person I've talked to has seen the inappropriate material from the city council, and their children have not been a part of that. And I think that this just goes to having a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. There is no problem. Children are not getting inappropriate books at the library. Then the other thing I want to add is that the Librarians Association has a code of ethics that requires them to make controls to censorship and not censoring books, and they have a process to do that, but the committee would not have that. They would not have any sort of code of ethics that prevents-
All right, thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members. Brian Thienis here. You know, I just recently got involved in city politics because, boy, I see people come up here and they just hand out false information like you can't believe, and I can't believe how rude people are to the city council. I think you guys are doing a great job. I apologize for my fellow residents for treating you the way they do, which is completely uncalled for. You know, a few parents objected to these books that have progressed over time. They were originally, yeah, they were probably puberty books, but there was edit after edit after edit to put the woke agenda on our kids, where the book, it's perfectly normal. I did my research, it's in all the children's sections of all the libraries, is suggesting that a 10-year-old make a lifelong choice about their sexuality, a 10-year-old, that's inappropriate. The city council, you guys did a great job with the ordinance that you passed to create a committee, and if you don't like it, just vote for a new council. It's a great idea.
Next speaker, please.
To all those who have not already voted, I urge you to vote yes on both measures A and B. A yes vote on Measure A repeals the existing parent guardian review board approved by last year's majority city council and fully supported by our then-city county attorney, Michael Gates, by a rubber-stamp majority vote. A yes vote repeals their approval of censoring books for the entire community regardless of any parents' agreement by a 21-member board that will serve as a decision-making authority for the city and shall be appointed by the city council, who happen to all belong to the same church, and as they've consistently demonstrated, have typically voted in unison. I believe that this kind of an arrangement for judging proper book content for our children, as well as a statement made under the board's duties that all decisions are final and unappealable, is a violation of our First Amendment rights. Only the U.S. Supreme Court can make that sort of statement with any authority, and even their decisions have been appealed. The book review system in our library has always allowed for such appeal. Vote yes on measures A and B to prevent our city's government overreach and intrusion into our-
Next speaker, please.
Beginning in 1959 as a kindergartner, and through my teaching career to 2016, at 8:00 a.m. daily, I stood for the pledge and ended saying for liberty and justice for all. In fifth grade, I recited the preamble, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and to our posterity." As a patriotic American, I believe that with all my heart, I believe in freedom to read freely, speak freely, and think freely. Our library matters and is key to our freedom. I count on the people of Huntington Beach to vote yes on measures A and B. Please fight the current of corruption and overreach. Support parents' rights to choose for their own children.
Sex has been around for a very long time. What has changed is the perception of when a child should be exposed to sexually graphic material. Sadly, political extremists believe that exposing children to this kind of material should be done at an increasingly younger age, and would like to place these kinds of materials in the children's section and/or young adult section of our beloved public library. From the moment I held my newborn children in my arms, I knew that my number-one priority for the next 18 years was to protect them from as many dangers as I could. As parents and grandparents, it is paramount that we continue to fight to keep our public spaces free from material that could be damaging to young minds that are not ready to completely comprehend it. To protect the innocence of our children, please join me in voting no on measures A and B. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Burns, City Council. My name's Dan Jamison. I'm here to talk about something other than A and B. I want to commend the council and the city staff for getting the Consent Item Number 11 on the agenda. That's the Navy Railroad right-of-way, which is now going to become, I hope, city property, and the sooner that happens, the better. We've been waiting years to have that happen, so I offer my full support. My wife and I live right next to that property. We've had volunteers out there now for several years, doing some maintenance work on the trail right near Rancho Road. So if you go on Rancho Road on Google Maps, it's now called the Monarch Nature Trail, and we got volunteer days out there, first Saturday of every month. So we'll keep it up now with city ownership. Thanks very much.
Next speaker.
Russell Neal. Measure A claims to transfer book selection and location power from the 21-member Parents' Board to a director and library services, whoever or whatever that is. But in fact, that entity also has no discretion but must follow a list of requirements that force adult sexual material into the children's section. Measure A claims to be about parents, not politicians, but in fact, gives neither parents nor politicians any power to remove any book determined inappropriate out of the children's section. Measures A and B are profoundly dishonest, misleading, and destructive, and must be defeated. Thank you.
Next speaker.
My grandmother was a racist. When the backyard got messy, she would say things like, "It looks like a bunch of colored folk live around here." I was born in Texas. At one point, MLK had been taught in every middle school, or every school, but after the fascist MAGA regime took over, MLK was synonymous with DEI and needed to be stifled. MLK was taken out of certain districts in Texas and now around the country. If I waited until I was 18 to have access to the knowledge of the civil rights movement, I'd probably be standing up for Christian nationalism and voting for anti-LGBTQ rights legislation like some of you are today. I am proud of my country for standing against the wishes of my grandmother and fighting for my right as a child to knowledge. I never thought I'd have to fight for American rights to books. This is fascist, and I am proud to fight it. Stand up and say yes to A and B.
Next speaker, please.
When the idea of a book committee first came up, I spoke to this council and said that doing so would create a monster. Boy, was I right. The city council would have you believe two things. First, for 50 years, our city librarians have been secretly providing porn to your kids, and no one ever noticed. Second, that a .02% rounding error on the budget will somehow prevent a crisis. These are lies. Now the truth. We're not protecting innocents when we put out porn signs. Did you know librarians have quit? Did you know that volunteers have been attacked online? Proof. Quote, "Protect the library from what?" "The pervs that are working there." End quote. I was shown this at the Volunteers Appreciation Breakfast. People with small minds talk about their big ideas. In the end, there is nothing to show for it, but their puffed-up ignorance. They hurt your kids to serve themselves. I volunteer, and I am not a perv.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Bethany Webb, Huntington Beach resident, homeowner, anti-fascist, mother of an LGBTQ child, sister, daughter, and friend of gun violence. I'd like to remind everyone that this month is not only Pride, Happy Pride, it is also gun violence awareness. The coward Mr. Burns, when he made Huntington Beach a sanctuary city last June in Gun Violence Month, would never look at me like he's not now, but he can call me out when I'm clapping in the audience. Vote yes on A and B because you know that the extremist city council does not speak for us. Vote yes on A and B because you know that our libraries are a place of safety for kids with different ideologies. Vote yes on A and B to send them a message that we don't support fascism or extremists in Huntington Beach.
Next speaker, please.
I'm outraged by this city council, what this city council is doing to our city. Potentially handing over our libraries to a private, for-profit company is a disgrace. You're stripping away a trusted public resource and replacing it with censorship, wrapped in pearl-clutching moral panic. 21 unelected, unqualified individuals deciding what my child can read? That's not protecting kids, it's political theater. As a parent, that is my right, not yours. These actions are not only reckless, they're tearing this community apart. You were elected to manage real city issues, yet you ignore our failing infrastructure and an $8 million deficit while manufacturing culture wars. This isn't leadership, it's distraction. Vote yes on A and B to restore accountability, sanity, and focus to Huntington Beach. We deserve better.
Next speaker, please.
Happy Pride Month. Did that make you recoil or smile? Governor Pritzker said, "When we see someone who doesn't look like us, sound like us, act like us, love like us, or live like us, the first thought that crosses almost everyone's brain is rooted in either fear, judgment, or both." That's evolution. We survived as a species by being suspicious of things we aren't familiar with. In order to be kind, we have to shut down that animal instinct and direct our brain to travel a different pathway. Empathy and compassion are evolved states of being. They require the mental capacity to step past our own primal urges. If you bristled at Happy Pride Month, your lizard brains are overdue to evolve. You have failed the first test of an advanced society. I voted yes on A and B to preserve a library collection that will serve all of our residents, not your church people.
Tim Geddis in the House. I would like to start by addressing Agenda Item 26, 25454, and calling it what it is, a gratuitous, grandstanding ploy by Kennedy, Twining, and Williams, our new three amigos, to divert and deflect from their maladjusted, no-on-measures-A-and-B positions. Amigos, no one is threatened to buy the library. Nobody in a position of authority has authorized book banning. That mega-morons would be in favor of doing either is your problem, not the community's. It's still yes on measures A and B and no on fakery. Pathetic. Vote what you will, but we say we are stoked to vote yes on measures A and B. We're proud to do it.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name's Carrie Mann. Moved here about 23 years ago. Absolutely love the library. When I had my children, I wouldn't have let my son play football. I didn't believe it would be safe, but I didn't tell other parents that they could not let their sons play football. I didn't like him going to violent films, but I didn't tell other friends that they couldn't go take their kids to go see R-rated films. I had some different qualms. He wanted to join Boy Scouts. My husband wanted to be in Boy Scouts. That was our family's decision to put him in, and yes, he did Eagle. What gets to me is now this is now, has nothing to do with anything. It's somebody else trying to push their religious beliefs on me and others. I don't mind what their religions is, but don't tell me what mine is. I don't tell them that they can't read the good book to their kids, and I don't want them to tell me what good books can be read to my kids.
Chris Reenie, native. Free people read freely. I saw it on the beach the other day. This city believes in freedom and liberty, right? Then why are extreme agitators, paid activists, and out-of-town donors trying to control what other people can read? I want to know why people are so obsessed with an assault and identical that they forget that rape is wrong. Conflating puberty books, young adult fiction, and adult fiction as porn is lazy and misleading. If the book review board can't tell these genres apart, I can't trust that board. Vote yes on Measure A. Next week's election is costing more money than outsourcing the library would save. This is financially irresponsible and shows an out-of-touch council. Vote yes on Measure B. Again, free people read freely. Free people vote yes on A and B. And regarding Agenda Item 26, the resolution does not mention privatization or outsourcing. Please amend it to assert that you will not privatize or outsource this library. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Burns and the members of the city council. My name is Kathy Haas, and I have been a resident of Huntington Beach for over 52 years with my husband. We thank you very much for everything that you are doing to once again make Huntington Beach great. We greatly appreciate the efforts that you have made. We appreciate you bringing this library issue to the fore. We support what you are doing. We thank you for going out into the community. You and legions of other citizens have been going around showing these books checked out from our library to the public, and we thank you very much for doing that. Vote no on measures A and B. Vote no on measures A and B.
Next speaker, please.
She had some good points. Good evening, city council. Mark Tonkovich. I'm here to support 202545. I thought it was ridiculous that this had to even come about. But, you know, all along, people have been gaslighting from the beginning that we're going to privatize, sell the library. We're banning books. And you guys always said, no, that's not the case. So where are we? Here we are, day, you know, three months later, two months later. You had to come up with a resolution to show that this is incorrect. And right now, the lie's got to stop. It's right there. They can't point to it and say, "You're going to sell the library. You're going to privatize it." I like the new one. Corporation takeover. Where the hell is the corporation? Who? So you got... They're out of it. So anyway, the definition of privatization, the process by which a piece of property or business goes from being owned by the government to being privately owned. Well, I guess you can say you're not going to sell the library now. The other thing I'd like to say...
All right. Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
When the truth is on your side, you tell the truth. What you do when the truth is not on your side tells you a lot about someone's character. Do they acknowledge the truth, or do they try to distract or change the topic? Probably the most important topic on tonight's agenda is the budget. The council proposes to steal over $3 million from the reserves to balance the operational budget. That's not what reserves are for. They're for saving up for long-term expenses like replacing water mains and sewer pipes. But to distract you from their fiscal irresponsibility, they throw up items like 25454, which is a smokescreen that sidesteps the real issues on the current special election ballot. Measure B is about outsourcing of library operations, not its outright sale. Distraction. Saying books won't be banned is disingenuous. They've already tried to ban books. And what do you call it when a decision is made not to allow a book to enter the library? Sure, you can call it a purchasing decision, but it also bans that book from the library. Ignore the distractions. Focus on the budget. And vote yes on measures A and B.
Next speaker.
I disapprove of what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it. This quote is the essence of what defines freedom. And the campaign to defend the library is not just about moving books from one shelf to another. It's about the freedom of each person to choose the books that he or she wants, or parents to help children expand their knowledge through reading. Libraries are meant to be spaces for open inquiry, and hiding books, aka censorship, undermines this core principle. Exposure to varied viewpoints, even those that are controversial, fosters critical thinking. There is no pornography in the HB Children's Library or in the Young Adults Section. There is age-appropriate information that will educate children and teens about their world. Let them choose and learn so they can grow up to be free and informed citizens, not innocents who are ready targets for authoritarian mind control. Vote yes on A and B.
Good evening. I'm a 60-year resident of this city. I am a Circleview graduate. I am a Marina High School graduate and a taxpayer. This council has centralized power, silenced dissent, and pushed through a wave of authoritarian, self-serving decisions with minimal public input. You resolved that airshow secretly and gave away $34 million. You fabricated lies about the library just to create the moral panic so you can move in and form your book review committee. You banned the Pride flag. Happy Pride Month. You moved to privatize our library. You cut speaking times from three minutes to one minute. You dissolved citizen committees that gave residents a voice. Does that sound like [BLEEP]?
Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm here to ask for a yes vote on A and B. Today, the overview branch of the HB Public Library is celebrating its 30-year anniversary. And it was a joyous celebration because people love their library. I've had a chance to get to know folks in the neighborhood there, and they really love their library. They talk about how librarians are so helpful all the time. They talk about the classes, the tutoring programs. And many residents, who are now adults, have very fond memories of this branch and speak with glowing affection about their favorite librarian, who was always there to guide them with a smile when needed. So they really care about libraries at all the branches of our Huntington Beach library. And so I say [BLEEP].
Clerk, call the next 20, please.
Jennifer Thomas.
Hello, council. I am here again to remind you to stop wasting our money for special elections and lawsuits that we don't need. This is not what you're here for. As a former Public Works Commissioner, we need the money for our city, for our police, for our fire, for the infrastructure. You're wasting our money because you have some political views that are of a small minority of the city. You have to look at all the people. This is the whole city, not just the people that believe like you do. The whole city. There's no porn in our libraries, and we should not be having another... A corporation take over the library. The librarians should be in charge. Thank you, and vote yes on A and B.
And before the next speaker, we're going to call the next 20 people. Next 20... Clerk, please call the next 20.
Jennifer Thomas, George Washington, Valentina Bankhead, Twanya Ryder, Don Anderson, Jason Will, Lori Turley, Paula Christensen, Myrna Tamura, Gina Gavlin, Anita Lamoner, Jaclyn Brode, Libby, Jennifer Moreno, Catherine Goddard, Tawny Kirkpatrick, Megan W. Slater.
Good evening. I'm trustee Gina Clayton Tarvin. Chad Williams was quoted in the news saying a serious crime against children was committed in the public library. He stated that, quote, "The city provided legitimate pornography to minors." So as a teacher, I'm a mandated reporter of child abuse. So I reported the city's alleged crimes against children to the Orange County District Attorney, to the FBI, and to HBD's chief, Para. To date, none of the three law enforcement agencies have found any pornographic materials in the libraries. So thanks to Chief Para, thanks to Chief Para for his honesty in dealing with the false allegations of pornography. I will now read a letter from Chief Para to the HB library staff. Dear staff, the executive leadership team supports each one of you. And I want to emphasize that we do not believe in the vernacular used by some members of the public to describe library staff as groomers and pedophiles. You are professionals, library staff. Thank you, Chief Para. Vote yes on A.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, city council. I am here because I want to really want to ask you a question about something that appeared in the Cow Matters article today, or yesterday. In this article, they had stated that there was an adult book club, a virtual book club for the Huntington Beach library that was going to read a book called The Grunkle. Now, The Grunkle is a book about a gay uncle who happens somehow to take care of his niece and nephew for a summer. And this book was approved for the adult book club. Yet it was pulled. It was pulled from the main reading list. Yeah. So that's the question I want to know. This is an adult book club. Are we censoring adults? And that's what I am concerned about.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm here to urge you to oppose California Assembly Bill 84. While it claims to promote accountability, AB 84 would severely limit access to charter and alternative schools. Schools that allow students to thrive in a safe environment where their individual needs and interests are encouraged, pushing thousands of students, hundreds of thousands of students, either back into overcrowded, under-resourced traditional schools that for many students didn't fit their learning styles, or financially overburdening families that will continue to make the choice to give their children what they feel is the best education. This bill threatens to take away funding, which would close many schools that serve high-need communities and students, displacing those students and laying off dedicated educators. It also harms local small businesses that support these schools, tutors, and educational vendors who depend on this sector. This bill is unnecessary. California already enforces strong accountability through Education Code Section 47604.32 and 47607, the LCAP process, the Charter Schools Act. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, city council. My name's Don Anderson. I appreciate this opportunity for public comment. It's important. I'm speaking tonight in support of measures A and B. This election is not about which books are in the library. It's about who decides which books are in the library. I want to have professional librarians make those decisions, not a group of politically motivated people or profit-driven corporate executives. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Myrna Tamura, and I am here to ask the mayor to send a letter to the state assembly in opposition of AB 84. AB 84 would severely limit options for students who thrive outside of traditional classrooms. Students with unique learning needs, health challenges, or circumstances that demand a flexible, personalized approach. Closing these schools would displace thousands of students and eliminate programs that are working. My own 16-year-old son has highly benefited from enrollment at a charter school because he wasn't thriving in the traditional classroom due to his struggles with dyslexia and ADHD. While the city council cannot vote on this matter, your voices do matter. Thank you, mayor, for using yours to protect school choice and advocate for the families in our city who depend on it. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Gina Garland, and I'm here to oppose AB 84. I know that you do not have the purview to do that, but you can have a voice and help let our assembly members know that this is something that we do not approve of. As a parent who has a child in a charter school and in a non-classroom-based classroom and one that is in a brick-and-mortar, we know that not every child fits in the same category. And our students can thrive in situations where they have a little bit more freedom to be able to choose how they're going to learn and how they are going to manage their time. And so I thank you for the opposition to AB 84.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm both a California credential teacher at a California charter school and a parent of a recent graduate who happens to have special needs from a California charter school as well. And I stand in front of you today in strong opposition to AB 84. And I'm seeking your help and using your influence to help us encourage those to vote against that. This bill, while claiming to enhance accountability, threatens to cripple and even destroy some of our most innovative and vital educational programs in California. AB 84 proposes devastating funding cuts for non-classroom-based charter schools. These charter schools are serving hundreds of thousands of TK through 12th grade students in our state and employing thousands of California credential teachers as well. These charter schools serve as a lifeline with academic accountability for students who don't thrive in traditional educational settings. Please stand with me in opposition to AB 84. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I stand before you today in strong opposition to AB 84, a bill that threatens the very foundation of educational choice for countless families. This legislation will affect thousands of students who rely on non-classroom-based charter schools for a tailored, flexible education that meets their unique needs, whether due to learning differences, health challenges, or advanced academic pursuits. Forcing these schools to close will decimate school choice, stripping parents and students of vital options in a one-size-fits-all system that does not work for everyone. These charters provide flexible, personalized learning environments that empower students to thrive. By passing AB 84, we risk abandoning these students, leaving them without the resources and opportunities that they deserve. My own four children have benefited from this opportunity and are thriving because of it. I urge you to protect educational freedom and to issue a letter of opposition for AB 84. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening. I have some words from Chad. Chad, you put this online for us. Fair enough, he's answering a question. Might shock you to know that I didn't come up with the wording on the signs, but I was the only one with the dollars to pay for it at the time, and I will stand by it. But imagine being the public figure that insisted on that exact wording and the other public figure barking out orders to post them outside of schools in particular, then watching me and my family get isolated to take the public lashing while they're remaining silent. Who could that be? Could it be Gracie Vanderbuch? That brought this whole thing to the... Hey, Gracie. That brought the whole shebang to the city council? She's going to stand up for the rights of the children. I'm going to put those porn signs by those schools. Right. So thank you, Chad, for outing the evil and the stupidity of our city council person. I'd like [BLEEP].
Next speaker, please.
I think it's revealing to note that the same three council members signed the statements and the rebuttals opposing the measures that more than 16,000 residents advocated for when they signed official petitions last year. Yet when you look at the statements supporting the citizen-led effort to protect the library as it is, you'll find signatures from three local school board presidents, a local pastor, an attorney, a businessperson, a nonprofit president, a community college trustee, a school board trustee, a PTA president, a retired teacher, a U.S. Navy veteran, a children's librarian, and a pediatrician. It's clear that people who have dedicated years of service to educating and protecting children children in their personal and professional lives agree that we should all vote yes on Measures A and B to prevent a for-profit corporate takeover of the management of the amazing HB public libraries and to protect the rights of parents to find the right books for their own children. Vote yes by June 10th on A and B, and happy pride.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Brode, and I'm a Huntington Beach resident. Huntington Beach, north of the library, had a problem with porn until y'all started talking about it at the City Council meetings, on social media, and the placement of all the porn signs in front of our schools and every corner of our residential neighborhoods. Parents are having conversations with their children way before they are ready to because of this. Thanks, Chad. Yes, kids will have questions about sexuality and what they are feeling. Hopefully, they feel comfortable asking their parents these questions and having these important conversations. But some kids may feel scared talking to their parents about this and will want to get information elsewhere. We can only hope they are not going online and not getting the wrong or incorrect info. The library has been a safe place for our kids to get educational information on this. And yes, a librarian can help them find this info. That does not make them a groomer. That makes them a safe adult a young person can ask info for. I have always trusted our librarians and the library for my children and will continue to do so as it is today.
Next speaker, please.
I have read and said the word porn more times in the last month and a half than I have in my entire life. So, thank you for that. But you know what? It's not about porn. No one wants kids looking at porn, and it's not in the children's section. It's about using inflammatory, alarming language, and deliberately lying to get you to agree to censorship on their terms and controlling access information. Why? A well-informed person is less likely to fall victim to manipulation tactics aimed to strip away rights. This is just the tip of the iceberg. Don't let it go further than this. Don't vote away your rights. Vote yes on A on B. Oh, and by the way, I have said porn four times in the last 50 seconds, so thank you again.
Next speaker, please.
Huntington Beach is one of the wealthiest cities in the United States for its size. We can afford to run our own library. This is... This whole election that the City Council has started and is causing is a national embarrassment for Huntington Beach. Though the nation and around the world, people are talking about the Huntington Beach porn wars that you started. You brought this up. There are signs, giant signs around our city with the word porn in eight-by-10-sized letters and Navy SEAL Chad Williams' name at the bottom. He is responsible for putting those signs up around our city. Every child, five to 13, old enough to read, can read a sign and one...
It's time, ma'am. Next speaker.
Good evening. You've heard comments from no and yes sides, so I will not bother you with more of that. But I am concerned about why we find ourselves here. We find we have seven council members who are all apparently of the same concern and same mindset. That's not healthy for any community. We need to understand how we can talk to one another. This business of having things go forward, coming out of whatever our dark rooms, Pier B, we do not know what you are looking at. We do not understand the details of the budget. We do not know what the airshow final signed papers are. All those things give us... Get us to this point where we're standing in front of you, talking and telling you we're not happy, and you're just listening for a couple of hours, a waste of time and money and energy, and then you go ahead and do whatever you have in mind. This is not serving any of us well, so I urge us to find ways to speak together.
Good evening, everyone of HB. My name is Slater, and I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about how the upcoming election meant to decide whether our library stays public or becomes private has been completely taken over by the debate about pornographic books being in the children's section. I totally get it. I see how some of the content might be seen as inappropriate, but instead of letting that issue be taken over... Instead of letting that issue take over this vote, we need to stay focused on the bigger picture. Who will be in control over the library? If we vote to make the library private, the public could lose its say entirely, and the very people raising concerns about these books might not even be included in future decisions. This conversation about book content deserves to happen, but it should happen after we settle the public versus private question. Let's keep the library public so we can have open, respectful conversations about what belongs on the shelves together as a community. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Okay, this is just to show that the left lied to get the ballot on them, the measures on the ballot.
So, all right. So, I can understand moving them, but banning them?
Yes.
She's... So, the mayor has said she is banning books?
Yes.
Altogether, they're not allowed in the library anymore?
Right. And this group of people that she has chosen...
Could you do me a favor? Could you get me a list of those banned... The books that have been taken out completely?
You know what? How about if I give you this? It might even give you more information. Let me find it. The one thing I have, and that's if you want to stay informed, put your name, your address...
All right, I'm going to do this, but what I want to know is, I want the definitive answer. She has banned the books from the library?
Exactly. Once they're banned, they're banned. That's the problem.
I find it crazy that a mayor has decided to single-handedly get rid of books from the library?
They vote no on A and B.
He's got... We're using his time at the mic. We just don't have the facilities to play. Everybody's in that manner. He used it at the mic. Clerk, clerk or city attorney, what is the ruling on how... Why we're not allowing... Yeah, there's nothing... Nothing against it. Get on... Please be quiet, let the people speak. Next speaker, please.
Let the people speak, he said. Valentina Bankhead, HB resident. Vote no on A and B. Vote no on A to keep transparency on the books coming into our community per the resolution that has been made by City Council for our families, young children, students, visiting public, and all that visits our libraries. If Facebook or YouTube won't allow imagery from the pornographic, explicit, sexually-charged cartoon books for little children to be posted and you get banned or suspended, why would we be okay with our kids having easy access to it in our libraries? There is no education in fictional books either about parents having sex with their children. Vote no on A. Vote no on B to allow our city to make cost-saving decisions about libraries without a citywide vote or declaring a fiscal emergency, putting our budget at risk. We elect the council to make these decisions. Taking that power away could harm the city's financial health and hand over a budget to be influenced by special interest groups that have zero acknowledgement or accountability for our HB community standards for all families. Vote no on A and B by June 10th. Also, vote no on AB 84 with Diane Dixon to keep valuable charter schools in our district.
Okay, before the next speaker, people, if you're going to have conversations, please take it outside. It's very disrupting, and we can't have that. We can't have more conversations going than the podium. That includes you, Tori. Please be quiet and not... Don't disrupt. Next speaker, please.
I second my brother Don McGee in wishing Butch Twain and Chad Williams Happy Veterans Month. I am Skywalker, the proud builder of the porn sign Alamo. I worked many elections, but this election has been the most important election that I have ever had the honor to be a part of. This election has brought out the left's worst demons. Our signs have either been stolen, vandalized, or ripped down more than any other elections. I have never witnessed more lies, gaslighting, victory, all anti-God, anti-morals than with this election. The pedophile left is totally crazed to expose children to cartoon porn. It is totally demonic with snickers and sneers and lashing of teeth. So, we are surely over the target. The left has waged a culture war on our children and the country for decades because it is the most important fight to have. This is a war for the mind and soul of our children and this great country. The left has stolen our country by stealing our children's minds, and they have done it one child's mind at a time. Vote no on A and B. In the name of Jesus Christ, we will be victorious. Skywalker, over and out.
Clerk, call the rest of the people, please. Call the rest.
That concludes our public speakers.
That concludes them. Great. Okay. All right, council member appointments, council members? Well, he wasn't up here, and he missed the window. Sorry, Ken. He didn't submit it. Ken, you missed your window. Council members, do you have any? All right. The parliamentary... Hey! You guys, we're letting him speak. You guys let him speak. Okay. He's... The parliamentary person says let him speak, we'll let him speak. Quit interrupting, though. You guys aren't accomplishing anything.
Just as a matter for the public, for the public, he is being allowed to speak, but if you need to put in your cards before he goes.
For the record, I also put in a request for item number 22. After a careful review of the proposed general fund budget for the upcoming year, it is apparent Huntington Beach has a budget loss in excess of $8 million and not a surplus as reported. This surplus was created by the following adjustments. The budget includes reductions of $5.4 million, the expenses that were previously provided. The effect of this adjustment is to say that this money will not be available to pay future bills. The budget also includes the transfer of $4.8 million from our reserves. Although none of these adjustments are illegal, I am concerned that the budget has been presented and misrepresents the facts. The people of this city deserve to know the truth. Thank you.
Okay, council member appointment announcement. All right, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. If the opponents of Measures A and B actually frequent in the library, they might know that the definition of pornography is the explicit description or display of sexual organs or activity intended to stimulate erotic feelings. I urge these opponents to perhaps check out these so-called suggestive books such as Lady is the Tramp or my personal favorite, Coming of Age, Tome, Our Bodies, Ourselves, and so on. If these books stimulate erotic feelings in these opponents, I urge them to schedule an appointment with a psychologist and not ban the books. Libraries are a safe space for families and some of our most marginalized constituents. Libraries provide free access to information that should encompass all viewpoints, even those that oppose yours and, yes, those that oppose mine. As an involved parent, I welcome questions from my children, such as why is Lady in Lady and the Tramp not wearing clothes? And because I bring my children to the library, they wouldn't have to ask what a tramp is because it's educated.
All right. That concludes and closes the public speaking part. Council members, do you have any committee... Council committee appointment announcements? Butch?
Yes, I attended OCAG.
No.
Oh.
That's next.
Well, they said one, two, three, four.
No. This is just council member appoint. Okay, now, Butch, you can go with the AB 1, 2, 3, 4 reporting.
I'm ahead of you, mayor.
Yeah, you are.
I attended OCAG last Wednesday.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Openness and negotiation disclosures. Does anybody have anything to disclose?
Mayor, I'm with the Fire Association.
I'm with the Fire Association as well.
Anybody else? All right. City managers report. City manager, do you have anything to report?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
All right. Consent item calendar. I'm going to pull item number 11. Does anybody have anything else they want to pull? Don?
I wanted to pull 13, 14, and 15, please.
Anybody else? Okay, then I will move 7 through 10, 12, and then 16 through 20.
Second.
Roll call, please, clerk.
Councilmember Twain?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilmember Gruhl?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Item passed 7-0.
Okay, I'm going to move right into 11, and that's the acceptance of the quitclaim deed from Spreckles Sugar Company Incorporated for the former Navy Railroad right-of-way. Just to let the public know, this is kind of an anomaly in government, but we were driving by one day, and I said, God, that property's been vacant for quite a while. I went over to the city manager, and I talked to him about it. He looked... He had his staff look into it, which then got referred to the city attorney, and they found out that we did have easement toward it on it, and then we looked into the rest of the ownership, which there really wasn't anybody left, and within three weeks, it became ours. So, now, I'm going to make the motion to accept the property, the quitclaim deed for the property.
Second.
Okay. Anybody want to make comment or anything?
No, I just commend the mayor for pulling this off. It's, as the gentleman Dan Jamison mentioned earlier during public comments, this is a huge piece of property that runs off of Rancho Road near Bolso and Bolso Chica east all the way to Edwards, and the mayor was able to quitclaim this back to the city. So, it's a lot of options in the future for this property, and it was a great job by the mayor.
It was absolutely a great job by the staff and city attorney's office. They did... They moved on it, and it was... It went smooth as can be. So, congratulations to their work. Madam clerk, call the roll.
Councilman Twain?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Pat Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilmember Gruhl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Item passed 7-0.
Okay, we'll move right into number 13. Don, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. This actually pertains to 13, 14, and 15. And it's a difficult situation in the private sector where I come from. There's nothing better than sitting down with your valuable employees and say, you did a great job. It's been a good year, and we're going to be able to award you a raise. There's nothing worse, contrary to that, than sitting down with your employees and say, you did a great job. The company's struggling. It's been a difficult year, so thank you for your work, but there's just not money in the coffer for the raises. So, in 2022, our council did award raises to the contracts and brought the council up to at least what I would call the median point amongst its peer group in the comp set. Unfortunately, what's happening is, you know, the surrounding cities continue to allocate raises that seemingly would be financially unsustainable. So, it's a difficult time for the city right now. In the private sector, which many of our people, our residents, you know, work in, there's no guarantee of that annual raise, and this is no indictment on the staff. I've met incredible people that work at the city. They work hard. They love the city. So, not being able to support the raises is not an indictment or a judgment on the people, but it's just a difficult time financially. I just... I don't see that to be something that I can stand behind. So, with that said, I just wanted to be able to voice my opinion on these three... These two contracts, three contracts, excuse me. It's got nothing to do with the people. We have incredible people at the city. It's just a very difficult time, so that's it. It's got nothing to do with the people. We have incredible people at the city. It's just a very difficult time, so that's it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, just from my own perspective, when you're elected to the city council, negotiating labor contracts is one of the hardest parts of the job. I'm actually really, really proud of these contracts. They were very tough negotiations that took about nine months to consummate. They're in line with our budget projections from where they started to where we ended up negotiating with these labor groups. It was quite remarkable. There's a lot of hard work by a lot of people, city managers, and also the labor groups themselves, understanding our tough financial situation, understanding that we have to look at our city as a family, and the way you would run your family's finances and not, you know, department by department. They understood that. Now sets the foundation for future negotiations that we need to look at the city in totality and not one department just fighting for what they think is theirs. Because if the city fails financially, we all fail. So again, this is a very tough process, took many, many months. We negotiate great contracts. We appreciate the staff members and the workers of the city. We know they're excited about this as well. I think it's a win for everybody, and it's in line with our budget, so I'm proud of that.
Butch.
Yeah, I also want to give my best and thanks to the city staff. I did, I was involved with many of the negotiations, as all of us were, and I want to also thank, it's hard to say what was, you know, what was discussed in these negotiations. I believe that what we came up with in the end was very fair, and I give a lot of credit to the union stewards. It was less than everybody wanted, and it was the most we could afford. And we did, as Casey said, we did have this in our budget, so thank you very much, everybody.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll move the items 13, 14, 15. Second. City clerk. Can you call the roll?
Items 13, 14, 15, together.
Yes, ma'am.
20?
Yes.
Kennedy?
No.
McKeon?
Yes.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Gruhl?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Item passes 6-1.
Okay, we'll move on to 21, Public Administrative Public Hearing. Status of the City of Huntington Beach Vacancies and Recruitment. Retention efforts pursuant to Government Code Section 3502.3. City clerk, do we have any supplemental communications for this item? Yeah, no problem. Take it, Don.
Administrative Public Hearing, item number 21, one email received.
All right, thank you. Staff, please introduce your report.
Thank you, mayor. Marissa Sur, our HR director, will provide the staff report.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Burns and city council members. This is a public hearing intended to provide the status of Huntington Beach vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts. As a matter of background, AB 2561 was signed into law in September of 2024. I'm sorry, yes, 2024, and it adds Government Code Section 3502.3 to amend the Myers-Millias-Brown Act, or MMBA, and imposes new obligations on public agencies related to tracking and presenting information on vacancies. Effective January 1, 2025, an agency must present this information at a public hearing before the agency's governing body at least once per fiscal year, and it must be prior to the budget adoption. The recognized employee organizations are entitled to make a presentation at the public hearing as well. And a note regarding the vacancy information that will be provided, the rates are a point-in-time count, and the date they'll be used for this year and then for future years will be January 1, year over year. So looking at the vacancy update, the stats as of January 1, 2025, there were 92 vacancies with a number of total budgeted positions at 1,005.75. That's a 9.1% vacancy rate. Typically, you'll see us hovering around 10%. That's a pretty normal rate for public agencies. And then looking at those same vacancies as of May 23, we'd filled about 40 of them, bringing that same employee group, that same vacancy group, to 51. And then breaking it down by bargaining unit, the law requires that if a vacancy rate for any one bargaining unit is at or above 20%, the specific labor group that is impacted by that rate is able to request additional information from the agency. In reviewing the vacancy rates by our bargaining groups, you'll see that the only group that's actually at or above the 20% threshold is the non-associated group. And I say group, not because this is a recognized employee bargaining unit. It's just a group of employees. They're actually not represented. But looking at our actual bargaining units or unions, they're all, the highest is at 14 and 1/2. That's the management employees organization, and then below that, you've got HDMT, excuse me, POA, MSMA in that group. So, not too bad. Relative to the 20% that should say. These recruitments are posted on governmentjobs.com. That's our main site sort, as well as other industry-specific websites. And we also work with the departments to figure out what the recruitment should look like for them, what the timelines look like, where else we can tap into, how we can more specifically cater the job postings to find the right candidate for the position. So looking at our recruitment efforts, for this fiscal year to date, we've received over 13,000 applications. We've opened 171 recruitments. We have 40 currently open, and we've got 30 eligibility lists. Now, those can be used for departments to tap into, fill future vacancies. The lists are good for a year at a time. And then speaking a little bit more to recruitment efforts, we strategize with each department in the hiring process. We determine the appropriate job posting sites and marketing strategies that we can employ. So speaking again to posting on government jobs, every government job for us will be posted on that website, but if there are industry-specific sites that we can post on or associations, professional associations that the departments work with, then we can post to those websites, too, to really tap into a specific candidate pool. So we'll also customize the job announcements. The job classifications are set and approved by the Personnel Commission. However, some of the catchy language that we use at the beginning to really identify the type of candidate we're looking for, if there's a certain type of person we're looking for, you know, you really need to go-getter, you need somebody who's really strong in XYZ category. We're always going to make sure we can put as much of that as possible out there ahead of time, just because it helps people who are reading through the postings to see, hey, is this really a fit for me or not, too? We review the current, we review the timelines with the managed, with the managers, and then we also assess any ongoing recruitment activities. So if it seems like the recruitment is getting a little stagnant or it needs to refresh, then we'll kind of reassess and figure out what we can do from there. All right, and then speaking to recruitment and retention efforts, the city offers competitive benefits. Those would include work schedules varying from a 5:40 schedule, which is your typical Monday through Friday, eight-hours-a-day schedule, a 9:80, which is nine hours most days, with one working Friday at eight hours, every other Friday or different day of the week off, and a 4:10 schedule, four days per week, 10 hours per day. Also, there's salary adjustments set by MOU. So speaking to the labor contracts that were approved tonight, and then the safety contracts that have been approved over the last few years, those are a great recruitment and retention tool that allows for us to be a little bit more marketable as employees or prospective employees are reviewing the salary and benefits of, you know, every agency. They're looking to see which will be the most competitive and most attractive to them. The city also offers retirement benefits to helpers, optional participation in deferred compensation, a general leave program, which is paid time off with legal cruel rates that are set by MOU, and these rates are typically set also through the MOU based on years of service, paid holidays, city contribution to medical premiums as negotiated in MOUs, city paid long-term disability, and access to the Employee Assistance Program, or EAP. And then there are also voluntary benefits, including theft and fraud protection, pet insurance, life insurance. These are all items that employees can voluntarily opt into during open enrollment. And with that, if you have any questions, I will say that for this item, the recommendation would be to conduct a public hearing for comments on the status of recruitments and vacancy efforts, and then to receive and file the report. And with that, if you have any questions.
Council members, any council members have any questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, do we have anyone to sign up to speak?
We have no, we have no one signed up to speak for this item.
All right, thank you. Closing the public hearing. Council discussion, anybody got anything to say? Hearing none. I'll make the motion to, as recommended.
Second.
All right, roll call, please. Madam clerk.
20?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Gruhl?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right. Another public hearing for number item 22. Let's see. Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications for this item?
Yes, mayor, we do. For public hearing, item number 22, we received three emails. Memorandum received from Robert Torres, Chief Financial Officer, with a revised Exhibit A1 to Resolution Number 2025-42 regarding the consideration of the adoption of the city budget for the fiscal year 2025-26. A memorandum received from Robert Torres, Chief Financial Officer, revised PowerPoint.
All right, thank you. Staff, please present your report.
Thank you, mayor and city council. Our interim chief financial officer, Robert Torres, will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Okay, mayor, city council, it's been said that the adoption of the annual budget is one of the most important decisions that every city council makes for their city, because the budget is the roadmap to get us where we want to be, to achieve our goals and provide city services. So we're here today to discuss adoption of the budget. So most of these slides that you're going to see tonight were the same slides you saw on May 20. I'm going to go through them pretty quickly, and then we have some new slides at the end that we'll go over and we'll answer any questions at the end of the discussion. So the first slide is Honest Way. Okay, but I don't need the first slide of talk. Let me, let me just tell you what we're going to do. So we're going to talk about all the funds and the city and all the budgets. The proposed 25-26, all funds and general fund budget, capital improvement program, a revised master fee and charges schedule, proposed revisions to the budget, so the budget that was proposed on May 20 and was discussed. In the meantime, there's been some revisions made. We'll talk about those as well. And then finally, your approval and related actions are being requested. So I'll go over all the funds, but because the general fund, of course, is the one that provides traditional city services, I'm going to focus most of the presentation again on the general fund. So we'll go to slide four. This is a table that shows the budgets for all departments regardless of fund. It's all the funds. You'll see the general fund is the first column. It's 298.99 million. And all the other funds, the special revenue funds, there are like gas tax, for example, that must be segregated, must, it can only be spent on major thoroughfares in the city. That totals about $45 million. But in total, the citywide budget, all funds totaled $555 million. This pie chart shows you where the 500, where revenues are coming from. You can see that property taxes are a larger source of revenue. I'll talk a little bit more of that when we get into the general fund. Sales tax, franchises, use of money in property, that's investments primarily, and leases that we hold. Let's move on to slide seven. So now we're talking about the general fund. As mentioned on May 20, staff had projected and discussed with the city council in January and March the projected $8.8 million deficit for fiscal year 25-26. So what we presented to you on May 20 was the plan to cover that gap and balance the budget. So this table here shows you the general fund budget. Total revenues are about $300 million. Total expenditure is $289, $289 million. That leaves a small surplus of about $1.1 million. That surplus, I believe, is necessary during the year. Unanticipated things come up. If the council may want to add to the budget or adjust the budget, that'll provide for that. Transfer of the infrastructure totals about $14.5 million, and CIP budget is pretty significant. It's $63.6 million. The next pie is the revenues, and again, let me just talk about property tax. I mentioned to you last time that property taxes are a larger source of revenue. It totals $114 million of that. $77 million is what's called a secured property tax. So when you pay your property tax bill every year on your property, on your home, for example, that is the secured role that goes into the secured property tax revenue that we receive. So that's the largest chunk of our annual $114 million from property taxes. Other components of the property tax include prior year's payment, unsecured payments, primarily leases. There's property taxes paid on that. I want to remind everyone that of every $1 in property taxes that you all pay and citizens pay and property owners pay, in Huntington Beach, we only get back 16 cents. Most of the dollar goes to the state of California to fund the schools budget. Sales tax is our largest, second-largest source of revenue. And we're projecting $53 million. It's basically flat from the current fiscal year. It's, we're projecting that sales tax for next year is going to be about $700,000 lower than the current year. And that's primarily due to three industries, automobile dealerships, building and construction is down a little bit, and just consumer spending in general is down because of the economy. Interest rates are high. There's a little bit of concern. People are starting to save more money. If you follow historical trends, you'll notice that before each recession, people start to stop spending and start saving a lot of money. So we want people to save, but when they do that, they stop spending money. And so we'll see what happens. I mentioned to you the last time around that all the analysts, the economists are projecting that things will stabilize by the end of the fiscal year. The Federal Reserve Board has said that they are going to enact three rate reductions by the end of the year. They were supposed to do one, they said, last month, but they decided to wait. So it's probably going to happen, if it's going to happen, it's going to happen the last three months of the year. And in the meantime, rates have been kind of fluctuating up and down, but they're at about where they were, short-term rates, at about where they were three years ago. So we're not that far off. It's just a little bit of volatility is causing consumer concern, and they're waiting before they make any big purchases. And again, with the sales tax, it's 7.34% in Huntington Beach. We talked last time about there's a couple of cities up in Northern California that are less because they don't have a local sales tax, but that's pretty low, 7.34%. But out of that 7.34%, Huntington Beach only gets back one percentage point of that. Again, the rest goes to other agencies, primarily the state of California and its agencies. So let's go on to the next slide. Little detail, I mentioned property taxes, $114 million. Again, the secured property tax makes up the bulk of that. Sales taxes, about 49.6, and the current year, we're expecting just over $50 million. So there's about a $700,000 difference between the current fiscal year and next year that we're projecting. We use a consulting firm for our sales tax forecasts, or HDL, Hindler Lighter, Delamas. A lot of cities use them. I've used them in other places as well. They do a real good job. They have access to our sales tax database at the state of California. We gave them authority to do that, so they can look at our database and see what's coming in. And one of the things that they do that's very important to us is a lot of times there's misallocations by the state. They will take, for example, Huntington Beach's sales tax revenue that should be coming to Huntington Beach might be allocated to another city. HDL will look for those. They'll audit. They'll find them. They'll submit the proper documentation for correction. So that's a lot of the work they do for us, but they also do forecasting, and they're pretty good about their sales tax forecasts. Utility user tax, a small increase. Of course, that's based on consumer. Of course, that's based on consumer usage and the price of the commodity. Franchises are down primarily because of SoCal gas and the usage and the price of the commodity as well. On the next slide, ten. These are expenditures by department, and I want to point out that the personnel budget is the biggest component of annual expenditure. It totals about sixty-four percent of the city budget. That is not unusual, and most cities, it's going to be between sixty and seventy percent. And of that percent, about fifty-two percent, fifty-three percent in Huntington Beach is public safety, police and fire. That's also very common in cities. Public safety usually makes up about sixty to seventy percent of the budget in most cities. The next slide is historical data and expenditures by department. Again, they total two hundred and ninety-nine million. You know, I want to point out that if you look at the proposed budget, two hundred ninety-nine million, you compare it to the adopted budget for Twenty-Five, it's flat pretty much. It's actually down a little bit, and even though there's growth in expenditure. So we'll talk a little bit about that a little bit later on. In fact, in the next slide, I'll go into that. The next one. So personal services, we're seeing an increase in next year's budget of just over thirteen million dollars. Of course, that has to do with salaries and wages. Over the last couple of meetings, you've been reviewing and approving MOU increases. And in addition to that, of course, our unfunded liability, our CalPERS costs continue to grow. So every time there's a change in our payroll, CalPERS recalculates the unfunded liability, they amortize it over a twenty-year period, and then they give us our rates. They give us our rates two years ahead of time, so they're basically two years in arrears. So whatever our payroll is this year and next year will affect our rates two years down the road. And then we're saving a million dollars due to our managed hiring process, basically a hiring freeze. There's a committee that's made up of the city manager, the HR director, and CFO. We review requests from departments to fill positions. They have to justify every position that they submit for filling. The next slide, thirteen. Operating expenditures, the voluntary range improvements, transfer, that's CalOptima. You're all familiar with that. I won't go over all of these, but water purchases, there's a small increase. Decreases in contracts for repair and other professional services. Even though some of the contracts grow by the CPI, there's a built-in COLA in a lot of them. At the same time, staff has done a real good job of ratcheting down their non-personal expenditures via budget cuts to their line items. The next slide is the piece in detail. There are six positions being eliminated from the budget. We talked about that last time. There's a downgrade, public affairs manager to PIO, PEO, Public Affairs Officer. And again, there's a million dollars in attrition savings. The next slide simply shows you where those six positions are spread across the departments. You have any questions, we can answer those later. Slide sixteen is a graph we talked about last time, showing the sides of city staffing. You can see that back in 2021, it was nine-hundred and fifty-eight full-time equivalents. And during the current year budget, the adopted budget had a thousand and five full-time equivalents. For next year, it'll go down by those six positions, nine-ninety-nine-point-seven-five. In 2021, you had an incentive program, you offered incentives, city offered incentives for employees to leave or early retire. Two-point-nine million in operating reductions. The biggest one is the B Well Program. We talked about that last time. Equipment repairs going down, general supplies, sales tax rebate, cellular data, overtime. So staff went through, along with city manager, staff went through the budget and reduced just about every line item that made sense to reduce. And in total, there was quite a bit, two-point-nine million in reductions in operating accounts. Okay, that does it for the general fund, but I'm going to go into the CIP budget, and I'm just going to go over these slides quickly. Okay, first slide, let's see, oh, we're still talking about interfund transfers, huh? Oh, yeah. Okay, interfund transfers. So part of our budget balancing strategy is to recommend that the city council use its own policy. There was a policy established in 2021 when the pension bonds were issued, several policies. One of them was to establish Section 115 trust. It's invested by the city treasurer, and the savings, part of the savings from the pension bonds go into that trust on an annual basis. So we're recommending that one-and-a-half million be transferred from the trust in order to help balance the general fund budget. In addition, we're recommending the reduction of two million dollars in the transfer to the workers' self-insurance workers' compensation fund. There are sufficient funds in there that this won't have a significant impact on that. Reduce the general fund transfer to the general liability account, same situation, there's sufficient reserve in there. The general liability fund, we don't think this is a significant issue. And transfer two-point-four million dollars to the general fund from the waterfront. So you'll recall that there was about thirty, thirty-one million dollars as a result of a lawsuit. We're recommending that we use two-point-four million. That leaves about four million dollars, four-point-three million in the current amount that's on reserve. There's a six-point-seven million dollar in reserve right now. And then also, the last couple are use of three million from the equipment replacement reserve. That money will be used on the acquisition and repair of equipment. And revenue increases, libraries, parking revenue, and the fire department is the advertising on the lifeguard towers and vehicles. The chief talked about it last month. Okay, so these are the reserves. And so I'll go over these quickly. The Section 115 trust, there's two. On the left-hand side, there's twenty million dollars. On the right-hand side, there's four-point-two million. The four million was established initially, and then the Section 115 trust was established thereafter. But in total, the Section 115 trust equals about twenty-four million dollars. Economic uncertainties fund, it's required, I believe under the charter, but it's required to set aside and have available at all times, two months' worth of operating revenues in the general fund. If there's a drawdown on that fund, the CFO and the city manager must come back to the city council with a plan to replenish that fund. And it can be enacted when general fund revenues are decreased by five percent or more, and we're not quite there yet. Capital projects fund, of course, has for capital projects. Going to the right-hand side, the HB Recovery Fund, that's ARPA. That was the federal funds that the city received and a lot of cities received during that pandemic a couple of years ago. We still have about ten-point-million, ten-point-eight million dollars on it. Pension rate stabilization, again, that was established after the pension bonds were issued, about five-and-a-half million. Year-end fair value, that's a stabilization reserve in case there's fluctuations in the value of our investment. That can be used to offset any potential losses. Right now, it's pretty stable, though. And the other purpose is, that's just money from this year that's already encumbered for contracts and goods and services that departments have ordered but are not going to be received until next year. So we encumber those funds and carry them over to the next fiscal year to pay for those goods and services when they come in. Okay, next slide. CIP program. First slide, new appropriation, sixty-three-point-six million added to the current year's appropriation, the seven million, that leaves, that gives us about seventy-point-nine million to, for capital improvement program expenditures. Let's go to the next one real quick. Here's a summary of some of the major projects, drainage and storm waters, six-hundred thousand, neighborhood projects, there's three, six-point-eight million, sewer projects, upgrades and repairs, seven million, streets and transportation, twenty-eight million, and water projects, seven, thirteen-point-seven million. So on May twentieth, we did not have an update on our master fee schedule. We have it now. So we're proposing revisions to the master fee schedule. So these are fees for which state law allows cities to recoup the cost of providing these services. They're labeled user fees. So the city goes through a cost recovery study about every five years, and in turn, at the interim, we're allowed to apply a CPI, an inflation factor. But basically, what we're doing this year is that departments are recommending certain fee increases in order to recoup the cost of the related services. The next page lists some of these, building fees, planning fees, land development, engineering fees, encroachment permit fees, fire prevention fees. This will generate approximately one-hundred-and-thirty thousand in the new budget. On the next slide, we have community and library services fees. Twenty fees are being adopted, new program fees are expected to generate about one-hundred-and-forty-thousand. Some of the new programs are listed here, alternative camp, Huntington Beach offerings, artist council, membership fees, pickleball volleyball court, hourly rental fees. Pickleball has become very popular in every city, especially in Southern California. Next slide. Specific events, the community and library services department is recommending that special events be based on three tiers. And here's some of the charges that they're proposing, application processing fee, daily permit fee, late application fees, event setup and takedown fees. You can see that ticket event fees, ranging from two to twenty dollars per ticket, will be assessed, non-refundable deposits of fifty thousand dollars for tier-three events, and estimated revenue from those is about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand for the next fiscal year. Other fees would be parking rates in South Beach, attended lots would go up, adjustments are predicted to generate about three-hundred-and-twenty thousand annually. So in total, the community and library services fee adjustments are expected to generate about six-hundred-and-eighty thousand in new revenue for the city. So that concludes the discussion of the proposed budget. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Robert. I'll just hit this one last. There is a fire department fee, AB thirty-eight, sensible space inspections. There's an item on tonight that talks about this new inspections that the city will have to do in the future, so this is a fee, so to pay for the service of the fire department to evaluate properties in those fire hazard severity zones. If we can move on to the next slide. There's been a few adjustments from the last week that are being requested, and I will go through those right now. Within the position adjustments, two administrative fire captains. One would be administrative fire captain over the ambulance operator program within the city, and the other fire captain would be over special events. We're proposing an upgrade to the ambulance operations. We have an ambulance that runs, we call it a day car, which means it runs during the day, fourteen hours a day. With all the calls for service increasing, we're proposing to increase that into one of the twenty-four-hour model ambulance operation. That would require six, putting part-time ambulance operators to six full-time ambulance operators at one-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand. And then below, if we go back just, oh, you're going through that. Can we go back? Yeah, there you go. And then below, you see these all funds. Most of these, again, are the ones up in the general fund from the fire department, but then we have some true-up items that we have more information from the block grant and the home funds. So those two, forty-three thousand negative, and the negative thirty-five thousand is true-up for actual funds that we are receiving. The equipment replacement item there, the fire engine that we are purchasing, the fire department secured a price, a hundred thousand dollars less than we had originally expected from one-point-six million to one-point-five million. And then we had some technical correction in the non-departmental. And if we slip to the next slide, I actually just went through these two. This is the upgrade of the ambulance and the two administrative fire captains. If we can go to the next slide. This is the adjustment. If these additions are approved, that would be six new ambulance operators. The two fire captains are in the org chart, but they have been unfunded for many years here, the last five to seven years. So it wouldn't change the org chart for those two. If we move on to the next slide. This is a summary of other technical corrections we have. There's a data entry collection. You see the five-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, that was incorrected, and so this is backing that out, and we have it in the Safe柚 School and the oil grant item placed in there, the two true-up, the community block grant, the home grant. And then we had a correction in the opioid settlement, and that would then have all the revised revenues would be five-hundred-and-thirty-three hundred thousand dollars. And then with that, we come to our last slide. For council, give you the opportunity to discuss and ask questions. But before we do that, I really wanted to just go through and, first of all, thank our finance department for all the work they've done. Our interim CFO, Bob Torres, came in just a couple of months ago to get caught up to speed and help us work through this. And we have a lot of, I have special thanks to Janice Echols and Michelle Jordan in the finance department. They've been working day and night and with all these updates and changes the last several months. And then again, thank all the departments and their analysts. They've been working with us to get this budget brought in as a balanced budget for this next coming year, Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six. And so with that, staff is here for any questions the council may have, and I do know you also have a public hearing to open up.
Council members, do you have any questions further on the report?
Just have one quick question. I know we review the user fees every three to five years. You mentioned, when was the last time we took an increase in the user fees?
So last year, the user fees were increased. This year, it is proposed to do it mostly by Consumer Price Index, or if they were new user fees.
Okay.
All right. Open the public hearing. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we have five speakers.
Okay, individuals wishing to speak, wishing to provide a comment on this item scheduled for public hearing may do so filling out the request to speak form, delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged, but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. I'll give three minutes. First speak, call the speakers, please.
Pat Goodman, Kathy Ryder, Tamara, Ken Inoue, Alisa Cotes, Lopez.
Mr. Newey, before you speak, was this what you filled out a card, this portion of the meaning to speak for the public hearing?
I pulled a card for both.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Thank you. Before you vote on this agenda on the budget, I'd like to remind all of you that you're voting on a budget that has a deficit. Regardless of the adjustments that were made to show the surplus, we have a functional deficit that you will be approving. In addition, the proposed budget does not include the infrastructure charges that will be charged to the general fund. These amounts have not been identified, although they were specifically mentioned in the infrastructure budget. In addition, this proposal includes resolution 2025-40, which levies a retirement property tax for the upcoming fiscal year. In the spirit of transparency, I'm extremely disappointed that this tax has not been enumerated and I guess demonstrated to show how much it'll cost each of the homeowners in this city. I'm wondering why it was buried in this resolution. Once again, members of the city council, the people of Huntington Beach deserve to know the facts. We are in fiscal crisis, and the way you present things will not change those facts. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Pat Goodman. I have just some observations and questions, I guess, too. Under the operation reductions, there are three that, well, two that are identified. Mind OCB WELL and SB2 funding. SB2 funding, I think, was not received this year. But that, I don't recall any discussion like at the budget town halls about Mind OCB WELL. And so is that program entirely being eliminated? Or how is that being addressed? And my understanding was that it really offered great service to the entire city and helped police, fire, first responders in having appropriate responses to mental health issues people are facing. And SB2 funding is related to not having the housing element and that those funds were used for the navigation center. And I know that that program, it's pretty, everybody really appreciates that and the good work that's being done there. The other area gets kind of into what Ken was talking about, using reserves to fund operations. That's a no-no. We don't want to go down that path. One of the things I don't see is, as far as the reserves, the reserve balances, like, I know that some of them are segregated or for specific purposes. But what are reasonable reserves for a city this size? And I think the only one that we have any discretion, maybe, I might be wrong on this, is the general, you know, one for handling operating expenses, having the two-year or two-month reserve in place. And then I have concern about transferring the Section 115 trust to the UAL. That, my understanding was that the Section 115 is used for the other OPEB, I think, the post-employment benefits. And I'm not sure that that is a like transfer. So it may not be legal. I wanted to understand better the causes of the self-insurance general liability jump to 14.6 million in this current year from 6.8 in 2023, '24.
Next speaker, please.
First of all, I do want to thank the city. This is a much better budget process than happened in June of 2023 while we sat here and during the course of the thing, different things were passed out. So I do appreciate seeing that. However, I am concerned about using reserve funds to close a projected deficit. I don't feel that sustainable. I'm also concerned that we are not hiring these management personnel. I feel that's short-sighted. These positions should be filled by qualified professionals or I feel like our staff is already extremely overworked. We continue to keep raising fees for parking and renting public spaces and using city services. I think that makes it harder to attract tourists and businesses to Huntington Beach. I also have the question about the 1.5 million from the BEWELL program. Does that mean we will no longer have any trained staff to deal with mental health issues? And at the end of the day, we need some transparency on how do we get to this budget deficit? And we already know based on going to the town halls that this is not a one-year, one-time deficit. So we need to be transparent. You need to let us know what's creating this. I could look at the chart and see that our city attorney's office alone has gone from like a 2.1 million to over 4 million. I mean, what creates these deficits? And I just don't feel you've been transparent, and I think we deserve some good governance.
Next speaker.
Good evening. Thank you, staff, for that great report. Thank you for working so hard on this. It's a real tough thing, budgets. Well, I like Kathy's comment. I think that this budget shifted into a risk zone as soon as that airshow deal was signed and we started giving away millions of dollars. So I thought about some ideas for how we can sort of start straightening things out. I noticed that the Visit HB Center receives a lot of our transient occupancy tax dollars. They receive a percentage amount. It is not capped. This should be capped. You only need maybe $2 million to run a marketing organization. And how about they're using the internet now? That doesn't cost as much money as it did, you know, 20 years ago or whenever that deal was made. But the percentage means that as TOT goes up, they get a bigger share. Why is that? Do they, it doesn't, there is no nexus between the amount of TOT and the percentage that they should get. So I believe we could run that organization more like the library and have volunteers that help out. We can focus it on, you know, keeping, helping the city, you know, with visitors. HB is a great location. It is internationally known. We just need to keep it clean and safe. The visitors will come. We also need to keep down the chaos in our town. I believe people around the world are just wondering what's going on here. So we have all these hotel rooms. We want to get them rented out all the time. We want this to be a pleasant experience and a nice place to visit. And we certainly want to patch up potholes, keep the streets safe, and make it a nice place for people to come and return to. I also think we should think about attracting high-technology companies. And to do so, we need to have a high-tech scientific mindset. Scientists, engineers, and medical inventors of all kinds, they like an open mind. They like a city with an open mind and a city that supports science. I think we need to put our heart there by supporting our library. I think we have to stop all the politically-charged initiatives that we're doing in our town. It's just damaging our image, and it's going to affect our long-term economic development. I know for a fact that certain corporations have canceled their reservations at hotels for their conferences because they didn't like our initiative to take down the pride flag. That's all for me today. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Bethany Webb again. So the glaring thing here that we're not talking about is the loss of revenue. From somebody that has been in Huntington for 40 years, the damage that you're doing, this isn't for show. I'm not telling you this because to make a point, to fill a narrative. I love my city. I have always loved my city, which is why I'm still here. And you're damaging it. Your circus has people not coming here. We lost the Olympics because of you. Our revenues are down because of you. Because people will go to Costa Mesa to shop. We're on list of do not travel. Other countries, other states, you put your MAGA sign up. Let's understand something. The majority of this country did not vote for Donald Trump. That's the truth. The majority of the people either voted for, he won, but that's not the majority of the people. I'm sorry. 50% of the people did, the majority did, 50% of the people did not vote for Donald Trump. They voted for someone else, or they didn't vote. In California, they did, millions did not vote for him. In Orange County, millions did not vote for him. The reason that I'm saying this is that you need people from blue states, this blue state. The average person coming from Huntington is coming from Orange County, Trump lost. Coming from California, Trump lost. Coming from Canada, you know what they think about him. You can still do things, no one's saying that MAGA, it's welcome here. But what we're saying is we need to stop making it that they're the only people welcome here.
Can you apply that to the budget, please?
The budget is, our revenue is down. Our revenue is down because you've turned our city into a circus, and you don't understand that. I wish you would try to do something instead of give our money away and our city council seats to your donors like Kevin Elliott and try to do something that actually makes Huntington someplace people want to come to. And this circus, this library, the pride flag, your First Amendment thing, that's not supported by the overwhelming amount of people in our country, in our state, in our county, and in other countries. Try to do something that actually brings everyone to Huntington, and that will increase the revenue.
That closes the public hearing, council discussion. Anybody have a case?
Yeah, let's go for it. All right, so before we move on, I just want to take a moment to thank, you know, city manager Travis and then every city staff member and director for their hard work that was required to balance this budget. Balancing a budget, the size, for a city the size of Huntington Beach, 20,000 people, $350 million is very complex with a lot of the inputs that are variable, that fluctuate every single year. So to address kind of the comments, one by one of the public speakers. Mrs. Ryder, how did we get here? I mentioned before in the town halls, every single city council's actions before us led to this moment. We're a city that is 119 years old. So when Gracie, Pat and I, when Gracie, Pat and I were sworn in, they immediately sent, gave us on our desk our budget deficit. Immediately we were sworn in. And we worked very hard every single year to take a budget deficit and turn it into a surplus. And this one was the hardest one, 8.8 million, and we did it. So that's how to answer your question, right? It's just facts. Mr. Newey, you talked about infrastructure. I'm sure you realize that it's impossible to fix all of our infrastructure needs in one shot, in one city's budget, in one annual fiscal year. Of course, you take every input into account and then prioritize what infrastructure needs to be improved or fixed that year. Just as you would a normal business, you're not going to go and fix our entire infrastructure in one shot. We understand we have structural issues that we're fixing. We're increasing our revenues. In terms, one speaker talked about Visit HB. Visit HB is paid for not through TOT, transient occupancy tax. The city gets that. Visit HB is paid through T-Bid, Tenant Business Improvement District. The hotels self-assess themselves and then give that money to Visit HB, who is their marketing arm. In Newport Beach, their marketing department has no connection to the city. It's a silent one itself. At least in Huntington Beach, we have some input and say with Visit HB, you can meet with them and talk with them, but the hotels self-assess themselves. And all that money, the T-Bid money, goes to Visit HB to pay for it. And then Bethany Webb talked about revenues being down. Really, the only one that is down is sales tax by 700,000. And that's really based on market conditions. The car dealers are one of our biggest, if not the biggest, sales tax generator to the city. And the current recession from previous years and ongoing has damaged the car sales market. That number fluctuates. At one point, it was down three and ended up 700,000. All the other revenue decreases on that one slide are utility users' tax, franchise taxes, because commodities aren't being purchased as much, gas and electricity, et cetera. So that's a false statement to say that our actions have led to revenue decreases. It's just not true at all. I think any rational person would understand that. So in order to get through this process, as someone mentioned, it was our entire focus this year to be as transparent and bring the community into the room as possible. I don't remember any other council that had town halls, study sessions, department head presentations, and many meetings that all led to this point of a balanced budget. This time, like I said, was the hardest deficit to overcome, but we did it. And we accomplished this by decreasing ongoing operating expenses by 2.9 million. That's big. We eliminated six positions, creating labor expense reductions. We increased vacancy attrition by a million. To touch on the reserves, we use strategic and prudent use of reserve funds, which is what these reserve funds are designed for in situations like this. Someone touched on it, using the 115 trust money to strategically pay off a million five in unfunded pension liability. So you guys understand, one of the variables is, CALPERS, the California Public Employees Retirement System, they're supposed to achieve a 6.8% return on all their money from the pensions. When they don't achieve that 6.8% return, you know who has to fund that gap? The city does. One year, CALPERS achieved a negative 7% return, which means the city had to fund that gap of 13%. That is the biggest variable expense in the city's budget, and it's very volatile and it fluctuates. So when you have money in the 115 trust, and it makes sense to throw money at our unfunded liabilities like we're doing now and strategically do it, it makes sense to do it, and that's what we're doing with the million five. We also used 3.3 million from the equipment replacement to reserve fund to, guess what, replace equipment. The fund it's used for, to replace equipment. We created efficiencies in each city department to reduce expenses, which is huge. You all saw the department heads come up here, laborious exercises to go through. And we're not done yet because this process starts tomorrow, for next year. And then we pursued optimization of every city department and every city-owned asset to create additional revenue. And so all these exercises are ongoing, especially for the next five years, at which point we will get some much-needed relief when our debt obligations for equipment and facility-related expenses expire in 2030 and 2033, which will reduce annual expenses by four and a half million. If you guys remember on February 4th, with the previous finance director, David Kane, in our long-term financial plan presentation, he went through this. So lastly, we worked really hard, as I mentioned earlier, on negotiating our labor contracts with MEO and the Teamsters, which were approved last meeting and tonight. And like I said, these negotiations were tough and lasted over eight months, but we're proud that the financial impact was within our allocated budget. Like I said, we appreciate each labor group's patience and their understanding that we need to view the city's finances in totality, not just by department. And we need to view the city's finances as a family would. If we all don't work together for the best interests of the city's financial health, then the entire city will suffer. We are grateful for MEO and the Teamsters for agreeing with that point of view and for setting the foundation for future contract discussions. And so we appreciate everything you guys do for the city. I appreciate city manager Travis and all the department heads for getting to this point. Thank you so much.
Don?
Thank you, Mayor. Well said, Casey, very well said. To echo a couple of Casey's points, the CALPERS, that's a variant that is just completely out of the control of any city. The things that we're focused on, one of the things that the HB3 was focused on in following up with the Fab Four is, you know, we're almost a real estate company. We have a lot of real estate assets. So we have really put to task our real estate division to make sure that our assets, as Casey said, are now better managed, better collected. We have systems that we're putting in place to make sure that we are managing these assets appropriately, making sure collections are not lacking for sake of systems. We're, you know, renegotiating leases when they come due to make sure we're at market. So we're really approaching one of our greatest assets, which is our real estate holdings, which is a which is a way that we can move the needle. So rest assured that that is a focus that myself, Butch, the HB3 brought, piggybacking on what the Fab Four started. This is something I focus quite a bit on. In addition to that, I do want to commend the departments for what they've done in the managed hiring process. As Casey said, it's just getting started. There are open wrecks that I know in speaking with Travis and he's speaking with the department heads, they're going to continue to look at those open wrecks because they do hit the pension, or not the pension, they do hit the budget. And potentially, there may be room to cull some of those if need be. So the, the observation on how we can continue to reduce the deficit is an ongoing thing. Aside from that, I want to commend the departments, in this case, the fire department, a revenue generator, as they not only cut things from their budget, but they continue to look for ways to produce revenue. They brought to us the lifeguard branding. They're going to drive a bunch of revenue that way. They renegotiated some contracts to lower the cost on supplies for the emergency medicine, medical process. They're constantly looking for ways to drive new revenue and lower costs, as all departments are, but they are a revenue generator. Aside from that, you know, I just want to commend the city for the hard work that they put into getting this budget deficit down. Oh, there was one last thing I wanted to say to Ms. Webb. If we could unify the benefit of the Pacific Air Show and realize that, let's take the proprietor out of the equation, that drives more revenue to the city, the restaurants, the hotel rooms, sales tax, TOT, worldwide awareness that bring people to Huntington Beach. So if there's a drum that you guys could stop beating, it would be that drum because even though there was a settlement paid to the proprietor, in business, if I had to pay any proprietor $500,000 a year for a fixed period of time because they were going to return me six times or greater, $3 million plus to my general fund, that is an investment that I would make over and over and over. So with that said, let's appreciate what the Pacific Air Show does for Huntington Beach. Let's all get behind it. And it is a world-class event that drives revenue. It's revenue positive, whether you like it or not. It's an incredible asset to the city.
Butch, you got something?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, so I look at this also from the perspective of both business, and I think actually, really good input on, everybody seems to understand the basic framework of the budget. We're either driving revenue, we're increasing fees, or we're increasing taxes, right? I mean, there's really only a few ways in which we can do this. We can get into kind of the granular detail, but generally speaking, from a sales tax perspective, if we wanted to be lazy, you can just increase taxes. I mean, that's ultimately the way to do it, but that wouldn't bring revenue into the city. People would leave. I have people that come down all the time to the restaurant from Los Angeles because sales tax is so high, and they come into Huntington Beach because we do have one of the lowest sales tax cities, especially in Southern California. You know, some tough decisions obviously need to be made. I'm coming at this new and fresh from a different perspective, but I do appreciate, obviously, you know, all of kind of the mental calculus that's gone into making sure that, number one, there's equity across the board in regards to how we're making certain cuts and then how we're investing today in order to drive revenue into the future. In regards to Huntington Beach being a place that everybody wants to go to, I mean, frankly, I think that we're a top tier when it comes to everything from the arts, I mean, to the ocean, fishing, marine conservation, businesses, real estate development. I mean, Huntington Beach kind of has everything. The only reason that the surfing was moved is because we don't have the waves. Surfing went to the trestles because they've got better waves, and now they're scrambling right now in order to try and figure out how they're going to be able to house and put people up in hotels. Article just today in various newspapers, so if anybody wants to read that detail, feel free to do so. That's my input, but you know, there's a lot of work that has gone into this, and I appreciate what everybody's done.
Travis?
Thank you, Mayor. There was one question about Resolution 202540 that's in the budget. This is an item that comes back every budget year. This is the retirement property tax. And the retirement property tax has been in place since 1978. And although I don't have all the history, I know since at least 2012, it's been set at this 15 cents per 100 cents value. So this is, this is in our budget and it is revenue the city received, but it's not increasing from what it has been in place for at least since 2012.
So there's no corruption, no one's hiding the football. It's not a tax. Thank you.
It is a tax.
No, I'm saying it's not a new tax that we're, yeah, living on the citizen.
Working up the budget isn't anything new. I mean, I remember when I was campaigning, I hit up the council at two meetings about the spreadsheet that I saw of the past budgets, I believe it was all funds, and it showed a steady decline, actually gross decline, from green to red. It went from 44 in the green, 22 in the green in 1920, then 2021, it went down to 17 in the green. And then suddenly in 2022, the, it went down to 21 in the red. It was like a 38, 39 million dollar change. And then in the budget that they were looking at then, in 24, 22, 23, was 42 in the red. And I don't remember how they dug it out or how it was changed, but I know when I brought it up and it came right out of the city's budget book, the city council went nuts because they didn't say the numbers were right. Then I produced it on the screen at the chambers, and it definitely woke up that we were not heading in the right direction. And ever since we've gotten here, we have been chasing the gas tail, trying to bring us back onto solid ground. There's a lot of things that have been instituted that are taken away from serving the people directly, and it's going to take a lot of work, but we're in for it, and we're going to try to do our best to keep us in the green.
And one thing on that, Mayor, I meant to touch on earlier, talk about revenue, we've worked so hard to streamline the city, attract businesses. I've touched on it many times and I will continue to do so. It's one of our proudest achievements, but our Streamline HB program, where we streamline city hall permitting, we increased our certificates of occupancy by 23% in one year. So that's businesses opening faster, employing people more quickly, and creating more revenue to the city quickly. And so that's a huge achievement that we're only going to expand from there. And like I said, other cities are coming to Huntington Beach, issuing RFPs to emulate our streamlined program. So we're really proud of that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to move the item as recommended.
But if you don't mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve the requested actions A through J, with one administrative fire captain and upgrading the ambulance model from 14 to 24 hours to help cover the increased calls we have received.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
I'd like to discuss that. So did they ask for two administrative captains?
Well, timeout. Gracie, you second it? Do you second? Okay, then we'll discuss, okay, we can discuss that.
Casey, did they ask for two administrative captains?
Yeah, I talked with fire, though, and they understand our current budget situation in terms of urgency. I think it makes sense, and they agree that the moving the ambulance from 14 to 24 hours helps with the personnel from sleep deprivation. And that administrative captain position to organize those ambulance operators, like an air traffic controller is important. And they fully understand that we need to get our revenues up and our expenses down, and we'll readdress this, that second captain position later this year.
So they asked for the two captains. They asked for it. We have it. Why don't we give it? They wouldn't be asking for it if it wasn't a necessity. It's not a luxury.
Sure, it's not prudent to add another $800,000 in recurring expenses when it's not critical with the third one. And with these two, they've increased revenues by 500. These two total are about $450,000, $500,000, so it's a push. They fully understand it. They understand we're not in a position financially to increase our labor expense. They're fine with it. I think everyone else is fine with it. It's a prudent financial decision. We're going to readdress this second captain position later this year.
Since these positions were defunded in 2014, our emergency transport fleet has doubled. And they asked for it. They would be asking for it because they need it. If you said, hey, we don't have engines for you guys anymore and we need you to just start using bicycles, they would say, hey, okay, we understand, we're going to do whatever it takes to make the job work. They wouldn't be asking for it if they didn't need it. And without them, we're putting both our services and our firefighters at risk.
So the second one is for special events, the second captain position. Again, in talking with fire, that's not as critical as the ambulance operator captain position and moving the ambulance from 14 to 24-hour operation. They understand the current financial situation of the city. It's prudent to, is, focus on that second captain position for special events later this year. There's a lot of good revenue-generating opportunities that Chief McCoy is working on with the lifeguard advertising towers. We've talked about some other ways as well. We have some runway to get those revenues up, to fully justify financially that second captain position for special events.
Again, I might understand where you're coming from, if this is something that would put us into a deficit, but the fact that we have it, they asked for it, they need it, why don't we give it to them? These administrative roles are essential to relieve overload for the chiefs and operational staff. So without them, we're putting both services and firefighter readiness at risk. Again, I can't emphasize it enough. We have it, they need it, why don't we give it to them?
So we actually don't have it. We'll be balanced this year, but as soon as we adopt this budget tonight, next year we'll have a significantly large budget deficit as well that we'll have to solve. And by adding that second position now, you're just, you're adding to your increased ongoing expense cost to the budget. So you're increasing your budget deficit structurally. And so like I said, fire is fine with it. They understand our financial situation. They understand we have the runway to address this second captain position later for special events, and in that time, we'll increase our revenues, deal with the advertising opportunities, some others, and also reduce our expenses. So I think it's sound financial prudence, and the fire is on board with it.
No, I don't think the fire is on board with it. You're doing a lot of speaking for them.
Well, Don, you got something to say?
Yeah. Kind of, I understand both positions, but you know, I'm with Chad on this. Said they're funded seven years ago, and they haven't asked for it for seven years. Have to kind of potentially play nice, if you will, or say, yeah, we're okay with it. But as you said, what happens if we aren't able to fund the necessary second position because unforeseen circumstances or, as you said, a looming continued budget deficit? I think the need outweighs the potential financial hit to the budget. There's a lot of things that we've allocated in the budget that could be unjustified by the reasoning that it doesn't make financial sense. But when you're talking about public safety, you know, I'm a huge advocate. You cannot have a thriving city if you don't have a safe city. Our ambulance department has doubled over probably the last four, five, six years. Right now, the scheduling, which is paramount to successfully delivering services, is done by, if it's my understanding, the battalion chiefs, the BCs. In the private sector, I would call that not highest and best use. The fire captains are going to be there to oversee a large division. Just because one is named special events, I would imagine that doesn't put them in a silo not to be able to assist in the management of the services. And it's very important to have the necessary people in place. They've done without for seven, or what's it, defunded when, Travis?
2014.
Okay, so 11 years, my math, 11 years. So now they've come back and they said, listen, guys, the time is now. Their calls are dramatically up. The heat map is something that shows you the sleep that these guys get on the ambulance department. There's some scary, scary statistics, and I would just hate to not have the proper funding, have the wrong accident happen that could be tied to, you know, lack of oversight. And we look back and, as we say, we stepped over the dollars to get to the pennies. It doesn't make sense. I'm for funding both of these right now. They don't ask for a lot. They drive revenue, they cut costs, so I would be fully in support of funding both of those right now.
Anybody else?
I would just like to back up what Don's saying there, too. These administrative roles would actually be relieving the overload on the chiefs and the operational staff. And so without them, we're putting our services and our firefighters at risk. They are our first responders. They asked for it because they need it.
Travis, not to put you on the spot, do you have an opinion on this? Oh, Butch has some.
I agree with everybody. I, I may have been one of the very first ones up here that sat down with fire and asked them about these two open captain positions, and this goes back several weeks. And I told the chiefs, the battalion chiefs, captains, that I'm going to go fight for them to get these two captains. They need two captains. They got over, they have 80 ambulance operators. We're going to get six more full-time with this new, the ambulance is going to be going 24 hours. I said, I'm going to deliver this, I'm going to work hard to find it. I believe that, as well. Realist, I can look at the numbers that are in, and I think my batteries are going out on this thing. I talked to the chiefs, I talked to the captains, and I said, what would you think about getting one captain in July and then give us a little runway? Because I have some initiatives I'm going to actually talk about here in a second that is going to hopefully drive more revenue, especially into public safety. We have some opportunities out there with grants from the county, and maybe we can, we can get those and we can be, you know, real solid in four, five, six months. And the captains and the chiefs agreed with me. I said, we're not going to be going out popping the champagne corks tonight because it's not a total win, but I think it's a compromise right now considering where the budget is. I want the two captains, just like everybody else up here. I made the initial promise of them that I will do everything I can and I'll deliver. I can't deliver on two, I don't believe, and be fiscally responsible. So, but since I made that promise, I'm going to dedicate myself to finding that funding and hopefully have it all ready to go within six months, so.
Butch, I'm staring at it right now, 1.1 million dollar deficit, or surplus. We have the money to do it. It's already in the budget proposal.
Thanks, Chad. I'm just going to arrest my, you know, I'm going to vote. I'm going to vote on the budget as it is right now.
Call the question.
Call the question. I think we've passed it out.
Are we voting as it is right now?
As amended.
My motion.
Can you repeat your motion, please?
Can we get clarity on that? Yeah, motion approving the requested action on items A through J, and then the exhibit A1 that was revised, that's on the agenda, with one administrative fire captain and upgrading the ambulance model from 14 hours to 24 hours.
Second on Gracie?
I did.
Okay, so if we don't want to go with the one administrative captain, what's the call on that one, then? Are we going for a yes all the way down?
If you, if you don't want to go with one administrative captain, because the original is for two, correct? Then it would be no. You do not agree with Casey's amended vote.
Okay, but considering that, I would be in agreement with the rest of the budget. So can I just motion to approve the adopted?
We can isolate it if you want. We can take the rest of it and then we can take the amended one separately.
Let's isolate it.
Okay, let's take everything but that amended item.
Ask Casey.
Is that okay to do?
That's fine.
All right. Let's vote on everything. We all agree on the rest of it but that, it seems.
Except the amended item.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
So not as amended.
Casey, maybe restate that motion with.
So then.
Why don't we vote on what's?
Yeah, so that would be the, yeah, the motion to approve the requested actions A through J, right, Vic?
A through J.
With, with the amended exhibit A1, excluding.
Excluding the.
Leave A1 out and vote on that separately.
Yeah. A1 has other things in it. Okay, that's fine. Go ahead.
So just A through J?
A through J, exhibit A1, amended, one captain.
No, just, we're just saying, just do the requested actions A through J.
So this has zero to do with the captain's positions, right? This vote?
Yes, sir.
One moment, please. All right, we'll take the vote. S. Casey has amended it. Twine?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Gruhl?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Item passes, 7-0.
All right, then I'll make a motion to. All right, then I'll make a motion to approve exhibit H one or adopt exhibit H one with one administrative fire captain and upgrading the ambulance model from fourteen to twenty-four hours.
Second.
Yeah, and it's exhibit one A.
Exhibit one A.
Prior to the vote, are we still open to comments, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
So my question would be, what level of commitment do we have for the fire department to ensure that this vote probably will pass, that they will get the second captain before the end of this year? Is it just a, hey, we hope to make it happen? Because you guys said you could deal with one right now, but in all reality, everybody loves a fireman, firefighter because they're nice people. Um, but what is the actual commitment to funding the second one? And, and what are the parameters, uh, that would prohibit the funding of that second one?
I, personally, we, we can only do our best to fulfill it. America's heroes, they, uh, we try to fulfill and do what's best for the city. And at this time, we can only do our best. And right now, we're struggling and it's a difficult position there. But we are public works, our police, our fire, I wish we can fully fund them all. But we just got to make difficult choices. And unfortunately, it's just the way it is. If I can't afford a Lamborghini, I'm going to settle for a V W.
We're still going to have a surplus after funding these two. If I could ask Chief McCoy to come up and maybe he could discuss as to whether or not the need is there, because Casey was speaking for Fire quite a bit, saying they don't need it.
So the, what is, is the question, I mean, we need them, whether it's this fiscal year or future fiscal years. Um, we're going to fully support whatever policy decision the council makes.
Yeah, Chief, I have no doubt that if you guys were just supplied with super soakers, you'd go running forward into a fire, to fight that fire with super soakers. I don't doubt that you guys asked, you know, for this because you need it. And so maybe you could speak a little bit to, uh, the need of these two fire captains, what that would do to, uh, relieve, uh, some of these other positions, uh, so that we could not really be putting our, our services and delivery and readiness at, at risk.
So like, like you hit on, uh, a few minutes ago, in two thousand thirteen, we had three administrative captains. In fourteen, we went down to two. And then in two thousand fifteen, we went down to one. So currently, we have one administrative captain who's assigned to our training division. He's assigned to do, he does, he's in charge of all of this training for our suppression personnel. Entry level academies, A O ambulance operator academies, and the in-service both suppression and E M S training for, for the entire department. When we had one of the previous captains, he was in charge of the ambulance operator program. That's when we had four ambulances. We're now at, uh, eight, um, six of them being full-time after this budget approval.
That's a doubling.
Um, and for a total of about seventy employees. And so really, a couple of the different chiefs throughout time, we have some suppression personnel that are handling the academies. Um, but we're at the point now where we feel like we're at capacity and we need to have somebody managing those seventy employees. The, the second administrative captain we're asking for, like we said, is going to be, um, in charge of the logistics for our special events. They're going to serve in a, they would serve in a public information role. We don't have a P I O currently in the fire department, so you'd be able to do that. They're going to assist with suppression supplies, P P E tracking and inventory. So there's, there's quite a few different things that, that both of those captains would do.
Chief, is there any way that the captain may be able to be assisted by a civilian administrative position?
We can, but, um, both of them are going to have some supervisory roles. And so for us in the fire department, that entry-level supervisory role is the fire captain.
I think really the whole point to this is that these administrative roles are essential because they relieve the overload on these chiefs and the operational staff. And so they're in the budget, if we approve, we still come out on top with the surplus. I can maybe kind of understand if we were going to cut one of these positions or not provide one, if this was the thing that, you know, puts us over the event horizon into a deficit. I, I can't wrap my mind around why, when our first responders are asking for something, we just ask, you know, can you do without? They're going to do without, you know, when I was in the SEAL teams, if we were asked, we could do a twelve-man job with three men, sure, we'll do it with three men. But that's not ideal. And so this is just one of those areas, I don't think that we should, you know, be trying to, you know, really bend over dollars to pick up nickels on. When it comes to public safety, this is a top priority for our city, we have the money, they need it, we should give them these two positions.
So, so you say we have the money, it's not a one-time cost. So this year, yes, we created a surplus, but next year we have a deficit and this adds to the recurring expenses. Chief, kind of hearing your talk, it sounds like the one in my motion that I'm approving for the captain administrative position for the ambulances, seems to be more critical at this juncture than a special events captain.
If I had to pick one, for sure, it would be the, the ambulance, I think that's where we have our greatest need in the fire department right now.
I appreciate you.
We have over a thousand employees in the city, I, I can't wrap my mind around the idea that these two fire captains would somehow wind up at the very bottom of that barrel. So in future, you know, budgets, if we need to cut positions or we need to not, uh, fund positions, I just don't believe these two administrative captains would be at the very bottom of that list. I, I just don't think you should mess around with, you know, our first responders, they need this service.
Just a quick, uh, administrative question, so the presence of a supervisor, do you think that that would? And I know we talked about workload, would that also potentially decrease overtime or excess hours?
No, because, I mean, right, they're not going to be filling any open vacancies. They won't be filling vacancies during the week, which would be their normal week.
Certainly, not filling it.
Bringing these two positions back, I don't, it's not going to relieve any of the overtime issue.
Okay.
Call the question. Yeah, I think we've discussed this, um, call the question.
Okay, so on recommended action A, the motion is for one fire captain.
One, one is, one administrative fire captain and upgrading the ambulance model from fourteen to twenty-four hours.
Okay.
In exhibit.
Add exhibit.
In, in exhibit one.
In exhibit one A.
Is there, is there a second?
Yes, I second.
Gracie did.
Burns and Vandermark.
Can I make a substitute motion? Mayor, can I make a substitute motion?
Yes.
I'd like to, motion to approve the two administrative fire captains. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Can you make this as a substitute, uh, even though it's the original motion? Okay, call the question.
Vote on the substitute motion, which is the original.
For two administrative captains.
I have a first with Williams, second with Kennedy, call the vote. Twining?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McKeon?
No.
Burns?
No.
Vandermark?
No.
Gruhl?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
For three.
All right. Yeah, we'll move on, uh, we'll move on to item number twenty-three.
Mayor, hold on.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, I have to read the ordinance title.
You're the swing vote, Butch.
Give me one second here, I have to read.
I thought we were voting on the first one, I asked if we're voting on the first one, that was the amended one?
Yes, that was the substitute motion by Chad.
No, I don't, I don't, I want to be no on the, on the amended one.
All right.
You don't want the two captains?
Okay.
It's already a vote.
Doesn't matter, he can, he can.
No, he can retract it in a timely manner. So how about if you recall?
He misunderstood the vote, he misunderstood.
Yes.
Chad's, um, clerk, can you please reread Chad's substitute motion?
He did a substitute to my vote.
And let's have a revote on that, so it's clear.
Let me repeat Chad's motion, the original motion, which is recommended action A, as it stands, two captains, and.
In exhibit, um, one A.
In exhibit one A.
No.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McKeon?
No.
Burns?
No.
Vandermark?
No.
Gruhl?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion fails by two.
Okay, now we go back to Casey's, Casey's motion with, as he amended.
Now, Casey, do you want to read it one more time?
Sure. Exhibit one A, with one administrative fire captain and upgrading the ambulance model from fourteen to twenty-four hours.
That's the one I second.
Give us a second here to record it. Okay.
When you're ready, call the vote.
One moment. No. Okay. As amended, by McKeon, one captain. In exhibit A, one A. Call for the vote. Twining?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Knowing my choice is to have two, but getting them one, I'm a yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Williams?
Abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vandermark?
Yes.
Gruhl?
Yes.
Williams?
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion passes. Seven, zero.
Six.
Oh, six, zero, one. That's got me all over the place.
Okay, now we're going to move on to item twenty-three, approved for introduction.
Give me one second here, I need to read this.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry. It's going to be a while.
This one, so. Twenty-two. Oh, yeah, twenty-two, right here.
Just need to read the ordinance.
Yeah, we just need to read the ordinance. Which one is it, one?
The last one.
Uncod, no, okay. Ordinance number four, three, seven, seven, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Huntington Beach.
Four, four, three, seven.
Correct, four, 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 three, three, seven. Ordinance number four, three, three, seven, an ordinance of the city, of the, of the city council of the city of Huntington Beach, amending this Huntington Beach municipal code by amending chapter two, point one, one, four, Department of Information Services.
I'm sorry, clerk, you said four, three, three, seven? You said four, three, three, seven, is it three, seven or six?
We're verifying.
I thought it was four, three, three, six.
There may be a Scribner's error. The ordinance reads, ordinance number four, three, three, seven.
Okay, thank you. Yep, we're good.
All right, we good to move on? All right. Uh, number twenty-three, approved for introduction, uncodified ordinance, number four, three, three, six, there it is, adopting the fire hazard severity zones. Chief McCoy?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, this evening I'll be presenting for your consideration adoption of uncodified ordinance number four, three, three, six. This evening I'll provide an introduction to the fire hazard severity zone maps, the requirements of each of the identified zones, an overview of the public review and comment period, and the process for the local adoption of the maps. Under Government Code Section five, one, one, seven, eight, the California State Fire Marshal is granted authority to identify all wildland fire areas in the state as other moderate, high, or very high fire severity zones. Assembly Bill three, three, seven, which passed in nineteen ninety-two prompted by the Oakland Hills fire, called for CalFire to evaluate fire hazard severity and local responsibility areas and to make recommendations to the local jurisdictions. Historically, the city of Huntington Beach has not been included on the maps. For the two thousand twenty-five release, CalFire began using a new modeling program that takes into effect the spread of wild, of burning embers, fuel loading, slope, fire weather, and other relevant factors. And the area of our community near the Bolsa, Bolsachica wetlands is now included. It should be noted that the program prohibits the local agency from decreasing the level of fire hazard severity zones as identified by the state fire marshal, but local agencies may increase the fire hazard severity zone. The government code requires that once the maps are published, local agencies must request public comment within thirty days and adopt a local ordinance within a hundred and twenty days. Shannon, can you put the picture up there, the website? The website was built and published that we used to disseminate information to the public and accept public comment. This website included interactive maps of the local wildland fire hazard severity zones, provided information on each of the zones and the associated requirements, and it was the portal for the community to provide comment. To date, we have received zero public comments. At this time, there are no new requirements associated with properties located in the moderate fire hazard severity zones. In the future, there could be additional requirements proposed by the California State Fire Marshal, and our plan is to be monitoring for any updates that could affect our community. The properties located in the high fire hazard severity zone, a fire hazard disclosure inspection will be required from the fire department for all property transactions. The hazard disclosure will acknowledge the natural hazard and the buyer will receive a report of the inspection relating to the defensible space. The fire department is currently developing an inspection procedure as well as a fee for the service for this inspection. It is expected that fire code and building code requirements will be updated in the future pertaining to these zones. Existing building code regulations can be found in Section seven A, titled Materials and Construction Methods for Exterior Wildfire Exposure. A new California Wildland Urban Interface Code will be adopted and go into effect January one of two thousand twenty-six with construction requirements for the fire hazard severity zones. Again, we are waiting on guidance from the state fire marshal's office on the specific details that those will entail. What we do know is that existing structures or structures in the remodel process in the moderate and high hazard zones will not be required to be upgraded to the new California W U I building standards. New structures built within the city will most likely have to be built to the new wildland urban interface building standards beginning January two thousand twenty-six if they are located within the high severity zone. The public review and comments have been opened and as I mentioned previously, we have received no comments. Prior to launching the Story Map website, we met with the Brightwater Homeowners Association to provide them with the details of the maps and answer any questions that they had. The information was included in the Surf City Weekly News Update and information regarding this program was posted on our city's social media sites. The Story Map site was accessed over a thousand times. The ordinance before you this evening is to adopt the maps as required by Government Code Section five, one, one, seven, eight. We are not increasing any of the severity zones and are not extending any of the parcel lines identified on the map. The impact to our residents is minimal. The California Department of Insurance has issued several guidance documents that advise that the fire hazard severity maps are intended to drive local planning processes and decisions and not insurance decisions. Currently, insurance companies are already using a risk analyst tool that goes beyond the CalFire-proposed fire severity maps. Additional information from the California Department of, the California Insurance Commission can be found on the Story Map website on the fire department homepage. Our next steps, if you choose to adopt this ordinance, will be for us to be developing and executing a new defensible space inspection program, continuing outreach to our local realtors and residents. and executing a new defensible space inspection program, continuing outreach to our local realtors and residents, and monitoring for any future guidance from the State Fire Marshal in regard to the construction requirement change. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Anybody have any questions? All right, I'll make the motion to move as recommended.
Second.
We have a first and a second, third, please call the vote.
Councilman Twining.
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon.
Yes.
Mayor Burns.
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark.
Yes.
Councilman Gruel.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Okay, item twenty-four.
Let me read the title. I'd like to read for the record the ordinance title, uncodified ordinance number four, three, three, six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Huntington Beach, adopting the fire hazard severity zone.
All right, thank you. Number twenty-four, item submitted by Councilman Butch Twining. Don Kennedy, Downlink Technology. Butch, you up?
Yes, thank you. When I took this job and when I ran for this job, one of my, one of my objectives or one of my goals was to find revenues for the city, and obviously, after sitting here through all this tonight, you can see that the, the city can certainly use a new source of revenue. So, in consultation with our Fire Department and our Police Department, uh, I talked to them about a new tech. It's not, not totally new, but it, but it's called Downlink Technology. And basically, that is, I'm just going to read it to you instead of trying to explain it. Downlink technology can be a powerful, powerful communication tool for law enforcement agencies. Downlinking is the process of sharing live video from an aircraft to a receiver typically ground-based. In other words, share, sharing live stream from a police helicopter or drone to a responding law enforcement team. Downlink systems can provide specific and critical advantages to the H, to the Police Department and the Fire Department, especially given the city's urban, coastal, and tourist-heavy environment. And that, advantages include wide area coverage at Huntington Beach. The city spans over thirty square miles with beaches, residential neighborhoods, commercial and industrial areas. Coordinated response in crowded tourist areas. Locations like Main Street, Pacific City, and the pier attract large crowds. Real-time updates to field personnel. Crowd control, active shooter threats, major structure fires, vehicle pursuits, medical emergencies, barricaded subjects, perimeter coordination with police and fire without confusion or delays. Disaster preparation, preparedness, and emergency management. Huntington Beach may be vulnerable to wildfires, flooding, earthquakes. Real-time updates on evacuation routes, road closures and conditions. Marine and coastal operations. Police, fire, marine safety units depend on solid communications with onshore dispatch, lifeguards, and coast guard. Emerging technologies. The Downlink system can support streaming high-definition video from drones and the helicopters during fires, search and rescue, GIS mapping, push to patrol vehicles, and fire engines. Downlink communications are not just advantageous, they're mission-critical. They ensure situational awareness, coordinated multi-agency responses, public safety efficiency in complex and high-risk environments. I'm recommending that, to direct the city manager to report back in ninety days on the viability and expenses associated with equipping our public safety departments with Downlink technology.
Yeah, Don.
Thanks for bringing forth Butch and allowing me to be part of it. Um, as they say, want to make more money, become more valuable. Our helicopters are so valuable. Technology will give the cameras the ability, as, as Butch said, to broadcast downward, making them much more valuable to the other cities that pay us for our services. We could be deploying our helicopters for many more scenarios. What, what I saw in Huntington Beach, let's keep it local. We watched the video of a fire helicopter, uh, without the Downlink. We saw our firefighters on the roof. The Downlink technology would have showed them that the firemen were standing on a complete hotspot in the roof. Thank goodness, nothing happened. The roof didn't cave in, but this is just one example that we, we saw where they were able to use the Downlink footage, the video footage, had they had the Downlink. In the, in the engines themselves, they would have been able to keep those firemen away from that internal hotspot, therefore saving a potential threatening cave-in as they were fighting the fire. So, that's just one use of it. I, I support the, the initiative that Butch has put forward.
Anybody else? All right. Butch, make the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move the initiative, like to make a motion to approve this item.
I'll second that.
All right, call the vote, please.
Twining.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
McKeon.
Yes.
Burns.
Hi.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Gruel.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Item passes seven, zero.
Okay, move on to item twenty-five. Item submitted by Councilman Butch Twining, Councilman Andrew Gruel, DNA and computer forensics.
Okay. You want me to read this one, Andrew? All right. This is really cool. And this one, I believe, can really deliver some much-needed revenue to the city. Um, so I'm just going to read it. Uh, the exploration into DNA and computer forensics for the Huntington Beach Police Department. Huntington Beach should consider the strategic initiative to establish a DNA and computer forensics laboratory for the HBPD. Considering this is an in-house operation, comes with high value potential. Viability depends on numerous factors, including financial, operational, and legal considerations. For example, having this DNA lab and, and computer forensics lab, faster case resolution, in-house DNA analysis dramatically reduces turnaround time compared to weeks or months utilizing the Orange County Sheriff's Office DNA laboratory, which is the only DNA laboratory in Orange County. So, everybody in Orange County uses it. Rapid action leads to faster arrests, case closures, especially sexual assaults, homicides, burglaries, and property crimes. Centralization increases control over evidence processing, enhanced chain of custody integrity, and evidence security. Improved cold case capabilities. HBPD could retrieve or revive cold cases with newly available forensic technologies such as touch DNA and low-copy number samples. Regional leadership and collaboration. Huntington Beach could become a regional forensic hub, supporting smaller cities nearby and far away or partnering with Orange County Sheriff's Department for shared access and cost-sharing agreements with other agencies. I did some research too on grant funding and federal funding. It just so happens that the Department of Justice and the National Institute of Justice for significant funding through a program that they, that they call DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Program. And another one is the Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grants. The Department of Justice is pushing real hard, and they're helping fund regional, uh, DNA hubs. And Huntington Beach just fits the, you know, the perfect description of what they're looking for. Um, at this time, all HBPD DNA evidence is processed through the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and there's a minimum six-month wait for most cases. So, my recommended act is to direct the city manager to report back to the City Council within ninety days on the feasibility of developing a DNA processing laboratory along with increasing the size and scope of HBPD's computer forensic laboratory. And if none of you have ever seen our, 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 our Police Department's, uh, computer forensic laboratory, it's amazing, and they're, they're at capacity, and they only handle cases in Huntington Beach. We could, if we expanded the computer laboratory, uh, we could, we could be doing this work, uh, for other, other agencies around Southern California. Uh, the study should include a startup cost for equipment, personnel, possible funding sources, legacy costs for additional personnel, equipment maintenance, and the potential positive effects on criminal investigations. And before I move this, I want to tell you a story that the head sergeant in our criminal, you know, crime laboratory told me the other day. Uh, back in November of twenty-four, there was a home invasion robbery here in Huntington Beach. It happened at about two thirty AM in the morning. The, the burglars broke into the house. The family was in the house. Uh, you guys might have read about it. Uh, the family was zip-tied, uh, uh, while the, while the criminals, the burglars, ransacked the house. They made a big mistake when they escaped. They left their DNA on the zip ties. So, we took the zip ties to the only place we could take them was the Orange County Sheriff's Department. And about two weeks ago, and you guys might have read about this too, we made arrests of the, of the two burglars. Uh, they were gang members, I believe it was Chilean gang members. We arrested one in Moreno Valley, and we arrested one in Riverside. And when the, when our Police Department picked these two guys up, they were, they were talking in the, in the cars. They were driving back here, and the, and the two, the two guys, the two burglars said, which, which burglar is this for? And they go, it was in Huntington Beach back in November, and they said, well, we've done so many since then, I, I, we couldn't remember which one it was. So, that's a true story, and you can, you can think about if we were able to process, if we had a DNA laboratory, we might have been able to save a lot of, uh, innocent people, uh, having their houses robbed. So, I'll leave it up to any, any questions on that.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to take it for, thanks, Butch, for putting this together, and I think it's interesting, especially considering I've had a ton of businesses all throughout Orange County, most of which have gotten either broken into, or we've had, you know, kind of crime on sight, and Huntington Beach is by far the best, but they're still hamstrung. And I recognize that when I saw this number here. I mean, six-month waiting period for most cases, uh, because it all has to go to the Orange County Sheriff's Department. I mean, they, they, they hold a monopoly on solving crimes, and it's, it's not their fault either, but we've got to introduce healthy competition in this world. Does, it doesn't just kind of, you know, fall in line with our commitment to obviously amplifying and underscoring public safety, and Huntington Beach being the first, but it also offers an opportunity to solve more crime, some of the most heinous crimes, but also the technology, right? So, you know, there's a phone, a computer, anything that needs to get broken into in order to be able to figure out who committed that crime so that they don't continue to commit more. Huntington Beach Police Department can do that right here in Huntington Beach, and then ultimately, we can outsource that to other cities who are also waiting in that long line, uh, to get to the Orange County Sheriff's Department. So, in a way, it also has the potential to ultimately pay for itself. This is the type of innovation that we need here in Huntington Beach from both the budgetary perspective and our, our ultimate commitment to keeping this the safest city in California.
I see Chief Parra is up there. Do you want to throw, uh, any comments in on this?
I invited him, and then I forgot to have him come down.
I want to just note too that Butch is one of the latest graduates of the Police Citizen Academy with Gracie. They just graduated last week.
Recent graduate, yes. A student, obviously. We, uh, so, I'm very supportive of, uh, the H items. I'm looking forward to doing the research. I'm looking forward to reporting back to you and giving you some options that would help assist us with providing a higher level of, of public service. We, uh, we do the best we can, but with, uh, with items like this, we would be able to expand our capabilities significantly and even make the community safer, so I'm one hundred percent supportive. I look forward to reporting back to you.
All right, did we have a second on your motion, Butch?
So, I move that motion.
I, I second it.
All right. Anybody else? All right, call the question, please.
I have Twining on the first, Gruel on the second.
Yeah.
Twining.
Yes.
Kennedy.
High step direction in the right, high, high-technology step in the right direction. That's a yes.
McKeon.
Yes.
Burns.
Hi.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Gruel.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Item passes seven, zero.
Okay. Move on to item twenty-four. Item submitted by Councilman Twining. No, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-six, I'm sorry. Wrong page. Okay, this is the one. Item submitted by Councilman Chad Williams, Don Kennedy, and Butch Twining. Affirmation for Public Library and Asset. I believe, Chad, you're going to present?
Sure, I'll go ahead and read the issue statement on it. So, uh, and thank you, uh, Don and Butch for joining me on this. We would like to affirm by City Council Resolution that the Huntington Beach Public Library will not be sold and books will not be banned. I'll go ahead and read the Resolution, number twenty twenty-five dash forty-five. A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Huntington Beach affirming that the Public Library will not be sold and that books will not be banned. Whereas, the Huntington Beach Public Library is a longstanding public institution funded by taxpayers and valued by the residents of Huntington Beach, and whereas the public has expressed concerns regarding the future of the library and the treatment of library materials, prompting the need for clarity from the City Council. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Huntington Beach does hereby resolve as follows. One, the Huntington Beach Public Library shall not be sold. It will remain a publicly owned asset. And two, books shall not be banned from the Huntington Beach Public Library. And so, I would like to, uh, motion to approve this resolution by the City Council.
Second.
All right, anybody else, anything to say? All right, let's call the vote.
Williams first, Twining second. Twining.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
McKeon.
Yes.
Burns.
Hi.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Gruel.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Item passes seven, zero.
All right, we'll move on to item twenty-seven. Uh, I submitted, uh, try to, we get, our city treasurer will be, uh, resigning as of July first. Retire. 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 And, um, we're going to have to fill that position one way or another, and the process has to be examined, and, uh, going to want to put together a ad hoc committee to review the city treasurer position and selection process. And, uh, that's as simple as that. We're going to put three people, three council members together and some staff as needed, and, uh, try to get through this process.
Second.
All right. Anybody comments, anything? Butch, you got a lot to say. All right, call the question, please.
Who was your first?
Pardon me?
Burns and.
Casey's second.
Thank you. Twining.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
McKeon.
Yes.
Burns.
Hi.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Gruel.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Item passes seven, zero.
All right, the new item, move on to twenty-five dash four, six, three. Uh, submitted by myself and Councilwoman Vandermark, opposition to AB eighty-four. Gracie will present.
So, Assembly Bill eighty-four, it's a direct threat on educational choice in California by drastically cutting funding for non-classroom-based charter schools, including homeschool and independent study programs. This bill undermines the ability of families to choose the learning environment that best fits their children's needs. The proposed thirty percent reduction in per-student funding, tripled oversight fees, and limits on enrichment activities will disproportionately harm students who rely on flexible, personalized learning. This program, these programs have been lifelines for students who don't thrive in traditional classrooms, whether due to medical needs, bullying, or learning differences. Rather than punishing innovation, the state should be supporting the diverse education options that serve all students. AB eighty-four moves Californians in the wrong direction, and I strongly oppose it. It's deeply troubling and frankly hypocritical that the government, which claims to champions diversity and inclusion, continues to push a one-size-fits-all approach to education, an approach that has repeatedly failed to serve all children effectively. True inclusion means recognizing and supporting the diverse need, learning needs of every student, not limiting their options. Yet, we continue to see efforts to restrict access to alternative educational models that provide critical opportunities for students who thrive outside of the traditional system. This is not equity. It is exclusion under the guise of uniformity. Our children deserve better. If passed, AB eighty-four would adversely affect more than seven hundred and ten thousand children from across the state of California, with over sixty-four thousand of those students in non-classroom-based personalized learning programs. It is for this reason that. It is for this reason that I strongly oppose AB eighty-four and recommend the mayor issue a letter of opposition to AB eighty-four.
All right, I'll second that. Anybody have any comments? All right. Call the vote, please.
Twining?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Burns?
Hi.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Grul?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Item passes seven, zero.
Okay. Would any council member like to add any new business to the next agenda? Nope. So, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Huntington Beach City Council Public Financing Authority is Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, here at this library theater, seven, one, 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 Talbert Avenue, Huntington Beach, California, nine-two-six, four-eight. We are adjourned.